Good evening. It is six o'clock and we will now call to order the city council meeting for Monday, May thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. And we will start with a roll call order. As I will start with Councilmember Cormac.
Present.
Councilmember Andori.
Present.
Councilmember Candell.
Present.
Vice Mayor Quoc.
Present.
And Mayor Gina Dawson is here. All right, we will now call for the adoption of the agenda.
So moved.
I'll.
Do we want to make the change of the agenda now? No?
Okay, okay. Is there a second on the adoption of the agenda?
A second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
And I am an aye. It is unanimous. So we will move to the pledge of allegiance. Thank you. And as it is the first meeting for the month of May, I will read our land acknowledgement statement. We acknowledge that Lafayette is part of the unceded ancestral homeland of the Bay Mewoc people. The Bay Mewoc and neighboring Aloney people have lived in and moved through this place for thousands of years. They storied and shaped this land for hundreds of generations. We express our appreciation and gratitude for this profound legacy, which enhances and contributes to our lives to this day. We will strive to honor this land and strengthen our ties with the indigenous communities that continue to live and work in our East Bay region as our neighbors and community members. We acknowledge and honor them and their ancestors, elders, and next generations. And that, we will move on to public comments for items that are not on the agenda tonight.
Mayor Dawson, I have some speaker slips for persons in the meeting hall and anyone in our virtual audience, please raise your hand now if you'd like to speak on public comments for items not on the agenda. Each speaker will get three minutes and our first speaker is Lisa Disbro.
I see the red is on. Should I click it?
Yes, click it and it'll turn green and you're live.
Your meter was on. If you please click the button again, you'll be on.
It's still red. That's good. Okay. Good evening. I'm Lisa Disbro and I'm leading the rallies across from Lafayette Elementary. And we began March eighteenth and we will continue throughout the month of May. And our motto is to first do no harm. And we began the rallies because of the decisions of the Lafayette Elementary School District in supporting Transgender Awareness Week for students four to thirteen years old. We think that is harmful. What I'd like to do today is explain our focus is the children ages four to thirteen who are impressionable and being fed a steady diet of harmful ideas. I'm going to list those harmful ideas for you. One, you can be born in the wrong body. Two, hormones can change a girl into a boy. Three, kids can consent and understand sterilization. Four, puberty is a harmful, unnecessary process. Five, a natural body can be the wrong body. Six, puberty blockers are reversible and safe. Seven, surgery can produce your authentic body. And eight, transition can cure depression. What we have found is that gender affirmation care produces lifelong medicalization and sterilization, infertility, cancer susceptibilities, blood conditions, brain conditions, reduction of cognitive growth, weakening of the skeletal, the skeleton, leading to osteoporosis at younger and younger ages. But what is fascinating is that all of these treatments are worth about one point three million dollars per patient. So our students, our children have become a commodity. I would like to suggest to you that what's missing in Lafayette is open dialogue with experts on multiple aspects of this so that the communities can be informed and not, so that we're not dealing with secrets. Currently, we're dealing with secrets and policies that do not address how controversial all this is. And I would like to see the Lafayette City Council take part in that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker, Luz Gomez.
Good evening, Mayor Dawson, councilmembers, staff, and Lafayette community. My name is Luz Gomez and I'm here to introduce myself as your new East Bay Mud Ward Two Director. I'm following in John Coleman's footsteps, big shoes to fill, but I'm very excited that I have his support. So Ward Two has been my home for over forty years and I believe we are incredibly fortunate to have the high quality water that East Bay Mud is able to provide. Before my appointment to the board, I worked in Contra Costa Public Health for twenty-five years, managing programs that improved community health and prevented disease, including the lead poisoning prevention program for a while. I also managed a program called Building Healthy Communities, where we were working with local jurisdictions to make sure that communities are planning for health, making sure there's enough pedestrian and bike amenities and the like. In fact, I collaborated with your team on the Vision Zero plan for Lafayette for a little while as well. I had previously worked at the Bay Area Quality Management District. I was managing their community engagement team. I served as Chief of Staff for County Supervisor John Joya for a number of years and I currently chair the County Sustainability Commission, where we're helping the Board of Supervisors implement their climate action plan. So I look forward to collaborating and partnering with you on any East Bay Mud related issues. I'm here to serve you and be a liaison between you and, and our team and the community. And I've brought my business card that I will leave with staff so you all know how to get ahold of me. I also brought for those of you who might be interested, information about our community assistance program in case, in case folks need help with their water bills. And that's it. Thank you very much for having me tonight.
Thank you, Luz, for making introductions. We look forward to working with you.
Mayor, there are no additional public speakers.
Thank you. With that, we will move to agenda item eight, city manager's update.
Good evening, city council members and members of our live and virtual audiences. This is an update on activities that our city departments have undertaken over the last few weeks. I want to start with the meeting that the mayor and Chief Aldrich and I had with Senator Glazer, CHP and Caltrans on May the third to discuss the enforcement of states, the state's regulations regarding gatherings on the Alcartola overpass and the postings of signs and flags there. As you recall, Caltrans has posted signs on the overpass on the fence stating that signs cannot be affixed to the fence. They've also submitted a letter to the city council indicating their concerns about distraction to the motorists on Highway twenty-four. Enforcement hasn't followed through, so we reached out to Senator Glazer's office and he scheduled this meeting. And we had a conversation with both CHP and Caltrans representatives. Caltrans, the senator had asked CHP to send a letter explaining their position as far as enforcement is concerned. Since then, the chief, Caltrans, sorry, the CHP chief has reached out to the senator and asked for another meeting, which has not yet been scheduled. And the mayor, the chief, Chief Aldrich and I will attend that meeting and provide you with a follow-up. From emergency preparedness, I want to thank Contra Costa's Fire Protection District for partnering with us with the Police Department and the Public Works Department last week. They cleared brush and overhanging limbs along some of our evacuation routes, including portions of Happy Valley, Taylor, Pleasant Hill, and Saint Mary's Road. From planning, the city, as you know, is updating its tree protection ordinance. And there's concern about striking a balance between saving the trees and recognizing the fire hazards that some trees pose. So we've established a survey that people can take online. If you go to lovelafayette.org/trees, we encourage people to take that survey and share your opinions with us. The housing element has been submitted to the State Department of Housing and Community Development as directed by the council. And we hope to get a letter shortly from them anticipating that we will meet their state requirements. From planning, again, this month, we received twenty-six development applications. And year to date, we have had, received five SB nine applications and eleven applications for accessory dwelling units or ADUs. From engineering, this Thursday, May sixteenth, is the thirtieth anniversary of the Bay Area Bike to Work Day. And as we do every year, city volunteers will be at Lafayette Plaza from in the morning from seven to nine AM. So people are invited to join us at the plaza. We will talk about the benefits of biking and not using your car. Of course, there'll be snacks, drinks, and the annual tote bag, which is highly prized. And also, there is an online survey open for the, it's called the Connecting Lafayette Project, which are the safety improvements around Stanley Middle School and Lafayette Elementary School. Anyone who's interested may go to our website, to Connecting Lafayette, and complete that survey. From Parks, Trails, and Recreation, we're looking for volunteers to serve on the Senior Services Commission. The city clerk is, the, our website is, or the city clerk are available to speak to anyone about this volunteer opportunity. And also, there are supported memberships available for La Marinda Village for seniors who qualify. This free access to La Marinda Village. Residents have access to free programs and free services at the city's expense. From public art, the art committee is accepting submissions for exhibitions in our downtown galleries, both at the Town Hall Theater and the gallery outside. Again, all that information can be found on the city's webpage. With that, I'm available to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Are there any comments from the public or questions?
I have no speaker slips on this item, Mayor Dawson, for persons in the hall, and I have no hands raised in our virtual audience.
Thank you. All right, we will move on to presentations and we welcome Lisa Strange from, who is the Northern California Outreach Manager for Insurance Commissioner Lara.
We are promoting Lisa right now. She's joining us virtually. And you will be able to see her here in a minute. Welcome, Lisa.
Hello. Thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, thank you, Lisa.
Thank you. Let me just share my screen if I may. All right, and that looks okay for you as well?
Yes, it does.
Great, great. Thank you. And good evening, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to share updates on homeowners insurance with all of you this evening. As the mayor said, my name's Lisa Strange and I get to serve as the Northern California Outreach Manager here at the California Department of Insurance. So I wanted to just take a quick moment to share the role of the Department of Insurance and the Insurance Commissioner. The Department of Insurance is the consumer protection agency for the nation's largest insurance marketplace. So all of our functions, including overseeing insurer solvency, licensing agents and brokers, resolving consumer complaints, and investigating and prosecuting insurance fraud are to protect consumers. However, it's important for me to point out one thing that we cannot do, which is to require or compel insurance companies to sell insurance to a particular person or community. And so since I'm going to talk about the state of the insurance market today, I wanted to start off by addressing the recent announcement by State Farm General that the company will be non-renewing approximately thirty thousand homeowner policies, which for obvious reasons raises serious questions about its financial situation as well as concerns by homeowners. And so the Department of Insurance deals with companies that are national and multinational in scale. And to be effective for Californians, we join forces with other states so that we can understand the basis for insurance companies' decisions and how they plan to recover financially. And in this particular situation, we've been working with State Farm's home state of Illinois to get a full picture of its financial condition and plan for improvement. And so we're, we're working on that. And one thing I wanted to share is that there is a misconception that when insurance companies pause or restrict new business, consumers will not be dropped immediately and left without coverage. You will have time to explore options to try to find coverage before you are non-renewed. And we'll talk about that more a little later because if you are receiving a non-renewal notice without seventy-five day notice and, and different things like that, which again, we'll talk about later, the Department of Insurance is here to help with that. So we need to make sure that that, that is, that those rules are being met. And so we are all aware of the stress on the insurance market right now created by natural disasters and global inflation. And as probably we all are aware, it's not just happening here, but really every state is experiencing these factors. Things like increased costs for rebuilding, labor shortages. And as we've seen, as risk increase, insurance companies are protecting their obligations to current consumers and limiting new business. And when they limit that new coverage business, that new coverage because of those major losses, whether it's wildfires or winter storms, that affects everyone, even, even some of us who are in low-risk areas, find it harder to get insurance. So when you look at our market, the twelve insurance groups, there are twelve insurance groups that control eighty-five percent of the California insurance market. And so since two thousand and twenty-two, seven of those top twelve insurance groups have paused or restricted new business despite rate increases approved or pending with the Department of Insurance. And so because of that, we've been consistently monitoring and analyzing the status and the direction of insurance availability trends. And I just wanted to share a couple of things. The Fair Plan has doubled to three percent of the market, becoming the insurer of first resort for many Californians, not the last resort as it was designed. The Fair Plan is not a state agency. It is a fire insurance pool comprised of all insurers licensed to conduct property and casualty business in California. And there is a critical fact to know, kind of similar to what I said when I talked about the role of the Department of Insurance. Unlike public utilities, which are required to provide coverage to all residents and businesses, under Proposition one oh three, insurance companies can legally refuse to write insurance unless they are able to meet one hundred percent of consumers' claims, cover their expenses, and earn a fair return. And we know that everyone would be harmed if an insurance company goes insolvent because it would not be able to pay its claims. So we want to make sure that does not happen. And so the department's done a couple of things. This regulation, I don't, it might be familiar to some of you, but I think it's important to just go over it. It was approved in October, two thousand and twenty-two and then implemented through two thousand and twenty-three. So I wanted to touch a bit on this and then I will share the current packet of regulatory solutions that we're working on currently. So in an effort to reduce the risk of major losses in the industry, the department introduced this Safer from Wildfire framework. As I said, some of you may have heard of it, but just wanted to provide a high-level overview if I may. And so it is a three-step system to protect your home, surroundings, and community, which in turn provides consumers with discounts and transparency about your risk rating. So under this regulation, we are seeing more businesses, homeowners, and communities making investments in wildfire safety, greater community resilience, reduced losses from wildfires, and more insurance coverage for mitigated properties. And so this regulation is really helping us attack the root cause of some non-renewals, which is wildfire risk, and will make Californians safer. So it's kind of a three-step process. And step one is pretty straightforward. You can do things to your home or business like Class A fire-rated roofs, enclosed eaves, fire-resistant vents, multi-pane windows, and the other things listed here on this screen. And I believe a lot of this information may have been sent out to you ahead of time, so I don't want to just read at you. But again, step one is pretty straightforward. As is step two, which is to protect your immediate surroundings. And so again, you can do things like clearing vegetation and debris from under decks and any other movable combustible materials from within five feet of the building being evaluated. And then step three. Uh-oh, there we go. Okay. And then finally, step three is an effort to obtain a community-level mitigation designation. And this will most likely involve at least one local government agency. And the community-level mitigation designations include a fire risk reduction community, which is by the Board of Forestry, and a FireWise USA site in good standing. and a FireWise USA site in good standing. And so when you do these steps, your insurance company will provide you a discount. And so I wanted to talk about the Fair Plan and how it's, what its role is in this because the Fair Plan is not subject to these mitigation regulations. However, they are still participating. So they have actually offered up to a 10% discount on policies in participating FireWise communities since May of 2018. And now with this regulation, they are offering two more hardening discounts, one for the step one, which was protecting your structure, and another for protecting the immediate surroundings of the dwelling. And so when applied, these discounts could reduce the wildfire portion of your policy's premium by up to 14.5%. And so if you're on the Fair Plan, homeowners should contact their broker to find out how to qualify and when you could receive your discount. And then while still talking about the Fair Plan, wanted to share that the department and the Fair Plan reached an agreement late last year to increase the commercial coverage limit to 20 million per location. And so we found that this addresses some of the greater needs for additional coverage for recreational youth camps, some of our HOAs, wineries, and agribusinesses. Additionally, the business owner policy limit was also increased to $20 million. Another thing I wanted to discuss about this regulation is that most people did not know that insurance companies assign a risk score to your home or business. And it's important for us to know what that score is because if you know the score, then or know the rent, you you get your score, then you will know the risks on your property and then you can take action to reduce them and make yourself and your neighbors safer. And so this regulation requires insurance companies to give you that score and they must tell you what factors went into creating it. And the score must be given to you at the following times, which is when you apply for a policy. They must give it to you within 15 days, before you renew a policy, which would be 45 days, and before you are non-renewed, which is at least 75 days, or when you complete mitigation on your property and you request a revised score. They must give it to you within 30 days. And then this regulation also created a right of appeal. So once you get that score, if you are not in agreement with it, you can appeal that with the insurer. And if you're still not satisfied with the response, then the Department of Insurance is here to help you with that. And when I end this presentation tonight, there'll be a slide on the screen with all of our contact information. Okay, so that's the Safer From Wildfire regulation. And in addition to that, and the improvements to the Fair Plan that I mentioned, the department embarked on another package of regulatory solutions. And it's the California Sustainable Insurance Strategy, which is a comprehensive plan to modernize the insurance market. And so I've listed five of the executive actions and reforms that this strategy is is that we're taking through this strategy. And so the first one is we will increase availability of insurance in wildfire-distressed areas. So we will use our prior approval rate authority. Insurance companies will write no less than 85% of homes and businesses in wildfire-distressed areas. This is a historic agreement between the department and insurance companies. And this will reverse the trend of a growing Fair Plan and close that insurance gap. Secondly, we will return Fair Plan policyholders back to traditional insurance with first priority given to hardened homes and businesses following the Safer From Wildfire regulation. So that was kind of one of the reasons I wanted to review that. And then third, the third next important element of this plan directly addresses the climate crisis. And so the department introduced the utilization of forward-looking catastrophe models, which prioritize wildfire safety, mitigation, and transparency. And some of the benefits for us as consumers through this regulation are that these models must recognize the clear benefits of investments our state is making in wildfire safety, including home hardening, fuel reduction, and prescribed fire. Insurance companies will increase their writing because they can better anticipate future losses rather than non-renewing high higher-risk policyholders or pausing writing altogether. And I'd like to note that we had a, we held a public workshop, I believe it was April 23rd, to hear from the public. And On Record, Allstate said, once we are, once this regulation goes into place, they will begin writing policies again in California. So that's great news. We hope others, we hope others follow suit. Another important element of stabilizing our marketplace is to allow California-only reinsurance costs. And reinsurance is insurance for insurers to help insulate themselves from part of the risk of a major claims event. And so under this agreement, companies wishing to use these new risk assessment tools must agree to increase and maintain their writing in the wildfire-distressed areas, which was that 85% requirement that I talked about in Bullet One. And so that will increase writing and removing people from the Fair Plan. Also wanted to point out that this agreement seeks California-only net reinsurance costs in rates to ensure that Californians do not pay for East Coast hurricanes or Midwest tornadoes. And then finally, we will continue modernizing the Fair Plan by expanding commercial coverage limits to 20 million per structure. So earlier I reported that late last year, we expanded the coverage limits to 20 million per location. So this will go further than that and be 20 million per structure. So that will further close coverage gaps for the, you know, the HOAs, affordable housing, and agribusinesses. And they also have been having a hard time finding coverage. So this will continue to help them as well. And so I also wanted to share some online tools from our website that help folks scour the marketplace while looking for insurance. We have a top 10 tips for finding residential insurance, which is kind of a summary of information and options available for us. And then we have a Home Insurance Finder tool, which can help identify those insurance companies writing in high-risk regions to help narrow your search. And then it gives you contact numbers for licensed agents and brokers in the area. You basically type in your zip code and there's a little box at the bottom that you need to make sure to check mark so that it will search for companies in high-risk regions that are licensed to sell insurance. And then just wanted to remind folks that we are here to help answer questions about any line of insurance. And sometimes when we receive questions about non-renewals, we need to look at the specifics to, so you will be asked to file a complaint so that we can write to the company and obtain their renewal guidelines to see if the non-renewal is compliant with their own guidelines. So when we talk about, you know, filing a complaint, all of that information of how to do so can be found on our website. And then we also have a consumer hotline number, 1-800-927-4357, which incidentally spells HELP. So 1-800-927-HELP. Or we have a live chat feature at our website, insurance.ca.gov. And so with that, I'm happy to take any questions or comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. As you know, this is very important to our community, great concerns. I appreciate you coming and updating us on the work of the commission. Are there any questions? Councilwoman McCormick?
Hi, Lisa, and thank you very much for for talking to us. And I think it's great to have a a communication kind of lease vehicle and method to voice our frustrations and concerns. One thing you mentioned Allstate with the strategy you have with this stabilizing the insurance market. You mentioned Allstate was indicated they might be willing to come back in if they were all adopted. Are other insurance companies, obviously State Farm is a big one that we've heard from. Are there other insurance companies that have also said that they are going to be re-entering or writing new policies in California once this plan is enabled?
Yeah, so Allstate said it during the public workshop that we had for the catastrophe modeling. However, the commissioner has an agreement with insurance companies to begin writing once this is all in place. And our part is scheduled to be done December of this year. We actually received an executive order from the governor last year to get this done in one year. So our part is scheduled to be done, as I said, in December. I would be remiss if I didn't say, though, that once this is done, then a couple of months of the following year would need implementation by the insurance companies. But but yes, there is, this is a huge, probably the largest insurance reform where we do have an agreement between the insurance companies and the department to begin writing once these, once this, once these regulations are approved.
Thank you. And I think I guess logical question is, can it be before December? Because obviously, we're eager to fix, you know, we have people losing insurance now and telling them that next year, there might be some relief is a tough message.
I know, I know, and I understand that. I don't know exactly when each each piece is its own regulation. And so we've already filed, we already have draft regulation and filed for one thing I was remiss in saying is we also did another piece to this strategy, which was to oh, I guess, improve and speed up the way that we do our rating plans. So when the insurance companies submit any rating plans to us, there's lots of paperwork, lots of stuff that needs that goes into that, and then we have to review all of that, often go back to the company and ask, you know, you're missing forms two, six, and seven, right? And just lots of back and forth. And so the first piece to this strategy, I'm so sorry, I was remiss in saying this, was to streamline that whole process of them filing their rating plans. And that regulation's already been drafted and we already had a public workshop on that, so it's moving right along. And then we just finished the workshop and we have draft regulations for cat modeling. So we are working on everything. I don't know exactly which parts might be done before December, but I think it's important, and again, I'm sorry, I didn't say it at the front of this, is that that other piece that we already did with the that we're working on in streamlining the rating plan is important because once our part is done and that there is some implementation period needed for insurers, at least if that involves them filing new rating plans or any of that with us, new guidelines, that will all be streamlined. We will have a clear, clear directions to them of exactly what needs to be submitted to us so that we can avoid some of that back and forth, which just adds months to the approval process. So I'm hopeful all of that helps speed this up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions, Council? Councilwoman Murray?
Yeah, I'd like to ask a follow-up question to that because I I understand you're aiming for December to have this set of regulations in place. And then, as you've said, it'll take time for the insurers to implement it. And then when they make application, is it still going to be the 85 days or 60 days for approval of the rates? I'm trying to get an idea of when an insurer would actually be able to come back in and start writing coverage. It clearly won't be December under this timetable. I mean, can you give us a sense of when it would be under the the progress that we're making now?
Yeah, yeah, I think that's a great question. And it's one that I do have into my executive team, but I don't have an answer yet. If it's if it's feasible, I'd love to get back to you in just a couple of days. I'm waiting on a response from them on that. Because I don't know and I don't want to overpromise.
Yeah, well, the concern I have is that the the date that's out there in all your materials is December. And as you've said tonight, that that's the work of the Insurance Commissioner getting that package in place. But for the public, there may be the perception that then they'll be able to get their their new coverage in December, but that's not the case. Right? It's going to take longer than that before these insurance companies are going to come back because they need to go through the process of implementing the new regulations, making their filing, and then going through the, well, 60 or 85-day period. And follow-up question to that, the governor is, his order is asked that that be reduced from 85 to 60. Is that correct? The the approval period for a rate, well, rate change?
Yeah, I'm not entirely sure on that. And again, we already have kind of our draft regulation done, so I would need to take a look at the draft that we did. And we already, we held a public workshop for that in March, so that's moving along. That was actually the first thing we tackled before any of these other five reforms that I talked about today. And so and I think it's important to note as well that the insurance companies, they don't need to wait until this is done to begin writing insurance again. If they find themselves in a space where they can, where some of their risk has been, they've reduced some of their wildfire risk exposures already, some in some areas, they can, they can write now. They don't have to wait until this is done. It's just that some are because of the ability to be able to then use the cat modeling and the reinsurance tools.
Yep. So if you could get back to us and let us know, let's assume the insurance company is gone. They're not going to come back until there's clarity on the reinsurance. Then what is the earliest that they could actually start writing policies? That would be good to know.
I will do that. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you so much for joining us today. So the presentation that we had in our agenda was very different than the one you gave us here. And so some of my questions are related to your presentation. And and one of the questions that I had was, when are the Fair Plan changes happening? Is that also in December?
Yes. So the only new Fair Plan change is the one that's increasing commercial coverage limits to 20 million per structure.
And they're not going to change the amounts for for homes, just for commercial properties?
For commercial and business owners. The dwelling coverage limit went up to 3 million. It was one and a half for years and years and years. And we increased that to 3 million. Was that in 2023 also? I can't remember. Might have been 2022. But all of the limits have been increased over the last couple of years through agreements with the department and the Fair Plan.
So what is the limit on homes right now? Are you saying that is 3 million?
3 million right now, yes.
Okay, thank you. That was a question. And then we keep hearing that, and on your little strategy page about how you're going to modify the methods, you didn't explicitly put in the ability for these insurance companies to use the forecasting that is allowed in other states. It wasn't on your slide, and I think that seems to be the stumbling block for almost all these insurers. That's what we keep hearing. And so why isn't that on your slide? And are you planning to put that in your December changes?
Yeah, thank you for the question. Are you talking about the catastrophe modeling, the forward-looking tools versus using historical losses to rate the premiums?
Correct, correct.
Yeah, I did talk a little bit about that. I think it was the third bullet on the Sustainable Insurance Strategy. And that would be the the Forward-Looking Catastrophe Model Regulation.
But what you said on that slide did not talk about forecasting. It was some other words on that slide, and I I'm concerned that that is probably the biggest sticking point. And I just want to make, you know, and that's what the insurance companies are going to wait to see until they come back. And so is there any plan to, you know, at least let them know that you are going to address that and you are going to be more like other states, and so they can plan to start coming back earlier?
Okay, and I might have, maybe I didn't do a good job explaining it tonight, my apologies, but we had a whole workshop around that. And in fact, at that workshop is where Allstate said, great. Once this is in place, we will begin writing again. We're just waiting for this to be in place and we will begin writing. And I actually have a whole Q and A, kind of one-pager on the cat modeling regulation that I'd be happy to send to you as well. But it definitely is the forward-looking tools so that we can, so that the rates will also take into consideration all of the wildfire risk and all the prescribed fire and all the work we're doing versus historic, using historic losses to rate and sell insurance.
Great, thank you. Appreciate that. I would like, love to see the one-pager.
Send that to you, yes.
And so there was, you also mentioned the fire risk reduction communities. How do you get certified for that? We have FireWise, we have FireWise, and so We have Firewise, we have Firewise, and so the, the fire risk reduction community is something new.
Okay. And that's actually through the Board of Forestry. And let me pull up my notes on that because it is only every other year. And so the application period to become a fire risk reduction community for twenty twenty-four did end on April first. Um, so we would need to wait another, I guess, year and a half or so to, to, for the next round for twenty twenty-six additions. So currently that's very few. There's a couple, four cities. And then the counties that are identified as F R R Cs right now are Butte, Los Angeles, and Santa Barbara. And I, I can, I can send you a link on that too. As I said, it's through the Board of um, Forestry and Fire Protection.
Thank you. Yeah, I'd love to see that. Um, and then the wildfire risk score. It sounds like we can just call our insurance company and they'll just give us our, the score and the methods?
They're required to give it to you. And most importantly, besides that, is they're required to tell you what factors went into it. And then equally important is if you don't agree with that, then you have the opportunity to appeal with your insurer. And then if you're still not satisfied with the outcome, then we would ask that you give the Department of Insurance a call so we can help figure out what's going on. Do they know about all the efforts, mitigation efforts that you've done in the home hardening and all of those things to give you um, a fair score?
Okay, so one more thing. So, you know, given, you know, I, uh, my house was canceled by State Farm. And so if I end up going to the fair plan, do you have the same protections under the fair plan to get your wildfire risk score and also get appeal?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You do, yes. Thank you.
I have a quick question to follow up on the wildfire risk score. Is that then uniform across the insurance companies? That if you were, or is that each one might have a different risk score for you? Okay.
Yeah, so there's a couple of different um, uh, their companies or names, I guess they're companies, yeah, um, that they use. So I'm familiar with um, Fireline, and they rate on a score of zero to thirty. And then there's another company called CoreLogic that rates on a score of one to one hundred. So um, they each use, there are those two common um, names that I'm familiar with. And um, so again, when you get your score, they'll let you know what factors went into it and where that is. Because obviously if one is zero to thirty, one's one to one hundred, there's got to be um, some explanation on, on what, what all that means for you.
Okay, thank you. Are there any question?
Hi there. Thank you for being here tonight. Uh, since Lafayette's in a, has many residents in a very high fire severity zone, this is a topic that is really hot in our community. Many people are talking about their cancellations. So we appreciate your being here. We know you're busy. But I would have two comments. One, uh, word of encouragement, just to say, I appreciate hearing that the, the state is encouraging folks to harden their homes, uh, work on defensible space, and also working with insurers to um, re, make sure that those insurers reward those homeowners for the efforts and money they're putting in to mitigate for their own homes and risk reduction, right? They should get rewarded for that risk reduction. And hopefully not to the, just the tune of one or two percent, but uh, meaningful reductions. We, uh, so that we can encourage more participation. So uh, I, I'm encouraged to see the educational outreach and also the um, uh, the, the new programs in place to challenge your score and so forth. So all that is a good thing happening. Um, on the other hand, I would just say that other concerns I've heard with regard to the fair plan, and you said this was supposed to be a plan of last resort. Uh, and yet in, in the last few years, uh, more and more of our neighbors are getting, are having to do that as the first or the only resort, right? And some of the things I'm hearing from the community is number one, that it's taking a very long time for an application for a fair policy to come through. So you said that uh, there's a seventy-five day notice required of non-renewal, right? So that's only two and a half months that a, a resident would get a warning that they're not going to be renewed. And I, I'm hearing that people are not having enough time in seventy-five days to actually find another insurer. And that the fair plan, the, the last resort plan is, is actually not responsive within those seventy-five days. Uh, and I'm wondering whether the fair plan has actually been maxed out? Is it actually no more money left and that, that's, that's actually not available and that's what's taking so long? Or, well, why is it taking so long for people to get information about a fair plan?
Yeah, that's a great question. Um, and I've got a, a long answer to it. So since the fair plan was designed as the insurer of last resort, and in fact, it was created in nineteen sixty-eight to meet the needs of homeowners that were unable to find insurance after the Watts riots. Um, and has been the insurer of last resort for a long time, up until just a couple of years ago. And so their computer system wasn't designed to handle this volume. Um, and so they got a new computer system in twenty twenty-three to handle the volume. And they hired seventy-six new people. Um, but obviously there's a little bit of a, you know, training and learning curve with those folks. Um, all this happened in twenty twenty-three. And um, in addition to that, they um, as I mentioned, they aren't subject to this mitigation regulation and these discounts, but they're still giving them. Um, but with their old system that didn't handle the volume, it also only gives discounts. It only can allow two or three discounts. So they give the Firewise Community Discount, which was step three of the Safer From Wildfire Regulation. And then steps one were protecting the house and two was protecting the structure. So those are the other two discounts that their system lets them key in. Um, so you must do all the things under, it's all or nothing for those first two um, discounts. And they don't like that. They want to be able to do like all the traditional insurance companies can do, which is do more, save more. And so the, so the update to their system as well as letting them handle more volume will also let them give discounts like the traditional insurers do. So there's been a lot of growing pains and all of that. They expanded their hours to Saturdays, um, so folks could have a better chance of getting through on the phone. And we are hearing that um, the hold time, if you will, and as you mentioned, getting quotes and all that went from the whole time, I think went from, I don't know, seven or eight hours or something terrible, or holding a long time and then the phone would just hang up on you um, to just a very reasonable amount of time in this calendar year because of the system finally worked out all the growing pains after they got the new system, hired the new people, got them all trained. So we are not receiving near the complaints we were um, about all the delays and, and all of that with the fair plan. So I guess I would encourage you um, to, if, if folks still are getting those long wait times and all of that, we would love to hear from you. Um, because we do have um, Assembly and Senate Oversight Hearings. And we got to hear from the fair plan, I think it was in March, um, from the president. And you know, she definitely reported that the wait times are way down, they're able to turn around quotes, people aren't falling out of escrow or any of that stuff that we were hearing before. Um, so I hope that's encouraging for you. And if, if you are still hearing that constituents are having an issue, we would love to hear from them, please.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council? Okay, before um, you leave Lisa, I'm just going to ask for public comment to see if there's questions from our audience here.
Sure. Why they're cutting that, I just, oh, sorry.
Uh, I'm sorry, there's any public comments?
Yes, Mayor. Mayor Dawson is now taking public comments on item nine A insurance. And our first speaker in the community hall is Dawn Wachlet.
Hi Lisa, uh, my name is Dawn Wachlet and I live in an area uh, that's on the north side of Highway twenty-four, which is now designated as one of the higher-risk areas in the state, uh, among the top two or three percent. And thus you, you can understand why those of us who live in that area are quite concerned. Another facet of that is for the last thirty years, I've been working with uh, universities and government agencies and developing a early detection, rapid response capability. Uh, this started with NASA shortly after the Oakland Hills fire. And it has progressed slowly but surely. Uh, there is an issue we call NIH, uh, not invented here, which is plaguing this situation. But uh, fortunately, we have two individual capabilities. One, UC Berkeley, uh, and one from a group that has just launched a methane satellite. And they're following up with a fire set, which would detect wildfires within minutes of ignition. Now you combine that with a command and control system, which is derived heavily from military experience. It is plentiful out there. And it's quite reasonable that any fire that starts in the state can be detected and have on-scene uh, tanker uh, capabilities on, what we would call on-top within thirty minutes. This doesn't come cheaply. Uh, but when you consider the value of the assets that are lost in some of these fires, I just think of the value of the homes north of Highway twenty-four here. So we're, we're talking perhaps a hundred million dollars to protect, protect billions of assets and protect, and protect lives. I would think if the state would embrace that and through the insurance department, you would have a lot of leverage with the insurance industry to say, if we deliver this capability statewide, you have to basically reciprocate uh, both in terms of what you offer and what you pay for it. Uh, it's a, it's a bit of a chicken and egg situation. But it has to be embraced by the state, uh, and it has to be done in a way that coordinates with Cal Fire and all the different departments throughout the state. So I'd like to encourage you to think about this as another way to tackle this problem. Uh, the term or the phrase we use is uh, early detection, rapid response.
Thank you, Dawn. I, I appreciate that you're able to share that idea with um, our Lisa today to get a good connection. Thank you.
Yes, please.
Is there any chance, Dawn, that you can send that kind of information to us and then we can pass it on to Lisa?
Sure. Actually, I, in October last year, I sent you.
Okay, I, I want to make sure that I'm sending the right stuff and so.
I, I will update it for you. Uh, I've shared it with the county as well.
Perfect, thank you. Thank you for coming out.
My pleasure.
Mayor Dawson, I have no additional speakers slips for persons in the community hall, and I have no hands raised at this time.
Thank you. So Lisa, thank you again for coming and, and representing the commission and all the work you're doing. A- as you can see, it is a crisis here. I mean, we are calling it a crisis mode. Um, because we're, people are being dropped, people on council even is, as you've noticed, but and, and we're having trouble with uh, people getting onto the fair plan. And then once they're on that, if they are, there's other wraparound insurance they need to get. So there's financial issues, there's housing issues, um, combined in all of this, and it's a very scary situation. Um, so whatever we can do for expediency to help urge um, the commissioner along, we'd be glad to do so. But we do appreciate the work that is happening and, and just hope that it can happen at a pace that really can better accommodate the crisis. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. And just because my time tonight's coming to an end, please don't hesitate to reach out um, further and if I can help. And then I've got my list of action items and I will circle back with everyone this week. Thank you so much.
Really appreciate it. Thank you. Okay, um, we have another presentation from our chief Ben Eldredge.
I'm here tonight to discuss NICSOL and uh, I did write a staff report. I believe everyone had an opportunity to review it. Um, for the sake of brevity, I won't read the whole thing tonight. Um, at the end of the day, uh, we're committed to ensuring the safety and well-being of our community at the police department. And one of the ways we do that is through communications. And improving communications has been uh, something on our to-do list for a long time. Uh, whether it's on emergency awareness, uh, wildfire evacuation, things of that nature, or whether what's, what's going on in the community. Uh, I'll start off with a high level of, we have basically three levels of communication that are used from the PD out with our community that sort of we manage at the police department versus uh, what our city PIO and other resources put out there. We have our community warning system, which we have continued to push heavily over the last decade. And happy to say that we continue to have a high number of registrations for that service. The community warning system is operated by the offices of the sheriff through the office, office of emergency services. Um, and they have staff on, on duty twenty-four seven. An example of that was at our tri-city meeting, was actually a representative from CWS in the audience, and she was the on-call uh, person and actually had her bag with all of her equipment with her. Community warning system for us is that, is that red handle. So if we need to put on evacuation warning order or a shelter in place, that is the system that all jurisdictions in Contra Costa County utilize. And below that is the city has utilized NICSOL. Uh, we first started using NICSOL in two thousand and ten and continue to use that. Uh, that is an area that I've begun doing some basic research to, to see if there's another platform. Maybe a little more cost efficient, in, in my opinion, uh, that might also allow us to utilize that resource more effectively in the future. And then below that is our social media. So we do have NICSOL, uh, Nextdoor, Instagram and Facebook. And so I put them in the hierarchy of CWS is the, at the top, NICSOL is this mid-level, and then social media at the bottom. If we do have a community warning system alert that goes out, we do try to reshare those things on NICSOL and on down to social media. The same with, if we have a NICSOL alert, if we have the opportunity in the time, we like to reshare that again on our social media, working our way down. For NICSOL, uh, it is nice to have our own system that I can manage directly and not, uh, the community warning system, for good reason, has certain criteria before we're going to utilize that. That does not come at any cost when I do use that, just to clarify. Uh, NICSOL is a subscription-based service. It has changed hands with different companies over the years. Um, but, so Everbridge, and then there's actually a new company I didn't put in the staff report that now owns them, but we all know it is NICSOL. So the city of Lafayette pays the general subscription every year. Uh, it is a no cost for a resident or a community member to sign up for NICSOL. Uh, you do not have to live in the city to sign up for it. And that might be one of the questions we have about the number of folks that are currently signed up that's outlined in the staff report. Um, I've heard examples of folks that have maybe family members and loved ones, maybe elderly uh, family members that live in town. They don't live here anymore, or they used to, but they want to know what's going on if mom and dad maybe might be at risk. Um, and so our subscriber base is large. It's at over twenty-three thousand for our NICSOL alerts, which essentially are text messages that you receive. And then there's other alerts that you can sign up for that are at a lesser number subscribed to. In the staff report, I lay out that every good NICSOL should have a beginning and an end, not just, hey, there's a problem. And then we don't tell you, hey, the problem's resolved. And that's always a challenge for us. Um, we do get charged and that comes out of our base model of forty-five hundred dollars. And so I lay out that if I do a beginning and end message for any one incident, it's around a thousand dollars that gets taken and are deducted from that forty-five hundred dollar subscription. Once we run through those funds, we then have to re-up minimum uh, baseline as a three thousand dollar additional. And the way it's been described to me is we're buying tokens. Um, as you can tell, I'm not a huge fan of, of their business model, but they are out to make money. Um, so I do have to consider that. That is not the only consideration. And I will let you know that our city manager has been fully, fully supportive that if I go over forty-five hundred dollars and I need to buy more, uh, that she supports that. So I do want to make clarify that, uh, while I consider that, uh, I know I have the freedom and ability that if I deem necessary, I can go beyond that base model pricing. Again, there's three different types of alerts. The big one that we always discuss is that text alert. Um, a lot of folks say, hey, if you send it to me via email at a lower level, which doesn't cost us money, or we send it or push it to the app, which you can download. A lot of folks don't find that as user-friendly. Of course, you have to have your notifications set up, whether it's for email or app. And so folks do like having the text option, but we try to be considerate when we send it. And so folks do like having the text option, but we try to be considerate when we send it. Uh, in my experience, I've seen other jurisdictions that have had to work through issues and we do too. But maybe sending out a NICSOL at three AM on a roadway with a tree down. Uh, some folks say, hey, I don't want that. And then you get sort of that over usage and you turn off the alerts. So from my view, when we've utilized NICSOL is sort of two different instances. One, we expect there to be a road closure or. An incident on our roadway that has the potential to affect us for a long time and a lot of folks. So for example, if we had a tree down on Pleasant Hill Road. On Mount Diablo, on Maraga, uh, again, not at three AM, but at maybe noon. That's going to be a big factor for a lot of folks to figure out their commuting routes, how to get their children, things of that nature. The other way that I use NICSOL is where I believe it, based on the situation that is coming in, the incident that we're currently on. That I may need you as a resident, you in the area to take immediate action. Uh, may not reach the criteria, community warning system, but I need you to take actions such as shelter in place. Um, if we do not deem there's a public safety threat, um, we have not used NICSOL in the past for that kind of incident. It's again. For that long-term inconvenience where emergency services, public works, other resources are going to be blocking the roadway for a long period of time. Or where I need you as a resident to take immediate action. I do talk about just sort of our priorities in the police department when we respond. I don't feel like I need to probably reiterate that tonight. Um, the feedback I have gotten as your police chief now for the last six years is, can we do a little bit more? Sort of uh broadcasting of information, sharing of information and. We have been trying to do that in two thousand and twenty-three. Kathy, our ministry of out now analysts really took that one on. We've tried to become more proactive on social media. I will say I appreciate the support of our community when we have posted. A good story or a story about, you know, here the crime occurred, here's the actions we took, here's the outcome. We have always received very positive, positive feedback from our community and, and I appreciate that. I do think there's opportunities for us to grow that in the coming years. Um, I think a lot of this seemed to stem and I'll just go right to the sort of source, I think, that drove the NICSOL conversation. Recently is when we had a bank robbery in the downtown. Um, it was a note passing bank robbery, no weapon was displayed. Uh, the person left, the clerk at the bank did a phenomenal job of keeping her cool and. Uh, passing a packet of money and I think it's pretty well-known out there that sometimes trackers can be in packs of money. So don't steal. Or don't rob, but uh, we started tracking that pack of money. Uh, it was going down Mount Diablo, took a turn on to Maraga. We immediately flooded resources into the area. Based on the timing of the day, we had additional resources that we don't always have available from the sheriff's office in the form of our justice team or our street team called the Jade Team. They were nearby on Pleasant Hill and were quick to respond. And so. Normally something I would have worked with maybe four to five officers called in resources from Arinda and Maraga to assist us. We were able to inundate the area with ten plus officers in a very quick time. Uh, we basically surrounded geographically the area where the, we believed the money was tracking. Later on, we determined, during the incident, we turned fairly quickly that the suspect had heard the police sirens coming. Had dropped the money packet and ran and a passerby uh who I think is still fairly new. Uh, to American culture and some of the things we have here, picked up the money and just put it in the stroller and kept walking. And um, no, I don't think any ill intent on her part, but we realized, oh. Initially, there was a language barrier. She said she didn't have the money. We kept moving because that doesn't match what we were described as the suspect. Um, then we realized, wait a minute, that you're the only person at the corner of XYZ street, you got the money. And then so we worked through the language barrier and determined she did have the packet of money. Police officers did have their firearms out, which would be appropriate based on that type of call. You know, what we consider the low ready or down by your side or, or pointing out on the ground. And it was at a time of the day where we had businesses open, people were out and about, and the question of NICSOL came up. And so just to let you know my decision-making on that day, one, we had all of our resources dedicated at the time to that. Um, our supervisor that was on duty, his primary focus was setting our perimeter, coordinating the units. And then obviously you're working with the tracking, trying to determine what's going on with this money that's still moving down Maraga. We did not send out a NICSOL because we did not believe at the time we had an immediate threat to the public at that time. Um, in hindsight and reviewing that based on the feedback we received from the community, I think that was an opportunity where. Um, maybe not NICSOL necessarily, depending on the resources we had dedicated at the time, but. Maybe later that day or first thing in the morning, putting out a social media post to say, hey. This is what happened yesterday. I want to let you know the outcome of it and that is something that I'm, I'm dedicated to working towards and trying to do better. So that's sort of my thoughts on that. Um, I think I could go to questions. I'm, I'm happy to cover more information in the staff report, but I know there's a lot of other items on the agenda. Any questions?
Thank you, Chief Aldrich. Uh, are there questions from council? Are, oh, yes, please.
Yeah, yeah. No, uh, thank you, Chief. I think this is um, I mean, I think given. The, the constraints that we're working under, you guys are doing a fine job with the, given the cost and, and the tools we have and everything like that. I think one of the challenges is if you look at what communication is like now versus what it was in two thousand and sixteen, you took over for two thousand and ten. When NICSOL was there, I mean, we get alerts now, you know, from CNN or, you know, a sale at your favorite retailer. Or you just get alerts about everything, right? And so I think, you know, we're working, you're working up a very kind of strict hierarchy. That breaks through, but unfortunately for all the rest of the public, they're getting inundated with stuff. And I think it's just difficult. We probably have to. Think the procedures probably just have to evolve based upon where we are today in our communication uh landscape. So I think it's a challenge. I, I agree. Also makes me nervous, very nervous when you say they've been acquired again as the target of being something that's been acquired in software companies. When software companies get acquire other software companies, you typically get higher fees and lower service. That's just what happens. So it makes me nervous that uh. As a long-term goal, we are, we are, we're a challenge, but, but no, thank you for that. I, I appreciate it. I just wanted to kind of bring that um. I think uh, it's just, the world has changed a lot. So it's hard.
So I will just add on to this. There was a recent discussion at the sheriff's office about expanding the use. Of our Twitter accounts and I think that could apply to us here. Um, and this would be something I'd be happy to discuss. You know, as we move forward, if we were to send out, say a tweet. Uh, you know, get away from NICSOL, but we look at a social media platform that we get citizens um comfortable with, that this is a, a effective method for community. You know, sort of instantaneous communication if possible. I think one of the challenges. I think from the law enforcement side, and I think even some of the other third-party vendors that are out there that work to provide those services to the community that, that they want. Is um. Constructing a, a full story, right? You know, could we send out a tweeter that, sorry, I don't tweet. Uh, can I send out a tweet that uh says, hey, police activity in the area, avoid it. Um, you know, there's that thought, you know, do we want to put more information? And that's where, you know. My, my instinct is I want to give you more information if I can. And, you know, so I think there's room to continue to discussion, try to look at ways we could do it, maybe with more ease. Um, I know the conversation of helicopters in the sky comes up is why, why is the helicopter overhead? You know, should I be worried? Um, you know, I guess my message to your chief is if I'm not sending out either a CWS or a NICSOL. We feel confident we have it in control. If we don't feel that way, that's when we're, we're elevating to those levels of the NICSOL and the CWS. A recent example was uh, the California Highway Patrol had a pursuit. Came along to east, excuse me, westbound SR twenty-four. The suspects exited on Pleasant Hill Road, uh, exit, they're foot-bailed out of the vehicle on the off-ramp. CHP and their air resources in the area, our two Lafayette officers on duty did respond to assist. They're quickly apprehended and, you know, got a lot of buzz going on. Um, I do want to acknowledge. Where I live, if the fire shows up or the, the fire truck shows up or the police cars, I want to know what's going on. And so. I don't mind the conversation. I don't fault anyone for asking. I want to know if it's on my court, you know, so. Uh, I just want to put that out there. I'm, I'm very aware of the want to know, that, you know, the feeling I need to know what's going on in my neighborhood. I'm not oblivious to that.
Thank you. And I think it's a good time to plug the community warning system since that is the top-level emergency. So everybody should go to CWS alerts if they aren't registered. So at least they're. Um, notified of those type of things. But thank you for your, your report and the clarification. Appreciate it.
And if we do come up with other solutions in the future, or we find a new platform that we think is more advantageous. Uh, I am happy to bring that back for your consideration. And then also your support, because we would need the support to uh get people to migrate from NICSOL. And, you know, so it would be a process to do that, but open to that idea.
Before you go, I'll ask for public comment if anyone has questions.
Thank you, Mayor Dawson. I have um, no speaker slips for persons in our community hall, but I do have a hand raised in. Thank you. Okay, so our first speaker is Lauren Herbeck, to be followed by Rob Lavoy in our virtual audience.
Hi, Chief. Lauren Herbeck, thirty-three eighty-two Maraga Boulevard. Um, I just wanted to follow up just so it's on public record. Um, email I sent Chief Aldrich this morning. So I'm really glad that this conversation's happening and I'm really thankful he brought up some points that. Actually, he answered some of the questions that I had sent. Um, but to just have greater conversation. Um, one of the things, and I'm glad to hear that he talked about was using social media, because I know a lot in our community. We immediately go to social media to find out what's happening. And I know me as a resident in downtown, it's always about, why is the helicopter flying around for thirty minutes? So it's, it's very appropriate that chief uses that example. Um, so, you know. Thinking more about how do we use social media um in, in that regard. Um, and so I think that's just, it's another tool that we can use and especially in the light of. Utilizing more free tools. Um, so, because I, I completely agree with the chief of you don't want to be. Chicken little. You don't, you don't want to be, you know, putting everything out there. And then when there is actually an emergency, people don't pay attention to it. So I think that's. Finding the balance is really important. Um, I think also too, um, I know, and I, and I want to address this because I know it is something that's been discussed. Um, within the community is just, and I get it too, is I get a lot of NICSOL reports from Maraga PD. Um, I probably average one a week and they're, they're messaging about prescribed burns. So I think it's finding that balance because, you know, I know Maraga probably has a lower subscription rate as than we do in Lafayette. But just understanding that, okay, if all of these NICSOLs or messages cost a certain amount, well, I look at it and I'm like, I'm getting one a week from Maraga. How much is their NICSOL bill? So it's kind of, it's, it's again, creating, being aware that there is this juxtaposition between. What we see in Lafayette, what's the reality of the budget spend, but then also. Us getting messages from Maraga about a prescribed burn. Um, whereas that might not in the moment, especially it's at ten-thirty at night, thinking, well, we're, they're spending X amount of dollars. On a prescribed burn message, why am I not at least finding out about why there might be. An armed suspect within running distance from my home. Um, and especially too, on a personal note. I live um, on the Los Chompas Creek goes through our backyard and, you know, we have sliding doors. That's an easy place for a suspect to potentially hide from. So I, I would definitely want to know, especially with a young child. Do we need to stay inside, keep everything closed? So just, I'm really glad that this conversation is happening, Chief. Thank you so much for um, being here tonight and. You know, communication for me has always been a number one thing. I always say is. You know, half the world's problems can be solved with good communication and half the world's problems can be created with bad communication. So I'm glad that we're having this communication. So thanks.
Mayor, if I could just add on, um, there's been a very healthy discussion on our sister cities. Um, I think it continues with sort of anything anyone said he's doing and we did look at, at least. Kathy's able to go in and look at NICSOLs that are put out by our other two cities. Um, I will say this, we were on pace with them. Uh, if you look at advisories, community messaging and NICSOL alerts. Um, I know uh, MFD has a lot more prescribed burdens in the area so that, you know, I definitely understand more uh of those out there. As far as the other messaging, I didn't put in the staff report because I never. I didn't want to look tiff or tat that we're competing with them on who puts out more. Uh, but I did also reach out to five other police chiefs in writing this staff report. Uh, Concord, Wana Creek, Danville, Maraga, and Arinda and Pleasant Hill. Uh, I heard back from five of them and asked, you know, when are you using NICSOL? How do you use it? One, Concord doesn't use NICSOL, they use other platforms. In my assessment of that, we were pretty consistent on when we do, the reasons for it. Um, I did not compare numbers for the other cities beyond Arinda and Maraga, but um. Again, I think, you know, to Lauren's, it could be use social media uh to leverage additional information in the future. And I think there's an opportunity there uh with that.
Thank you for that. And I just want to add, um, as far as social media, the city also works obviously in tandem with the, um, the police department and, and CONFIRE. In fact. The evacuation route clearing was a good example of the, using social media to do that as opposed to you having to, to do anything particular through the police department. So. There are different ways we're communicating and that scope of communication. So. But thank you for, for that report and including that Kathy has also run down for you as well. Thank you. And there was another.
Our next speaker is Rob Lavoy. Rob, you'll need to unmute yourself.
Yes, hello.
Hello.
Thank you. Uh, good afternoon, uh, council and Chief Aldrich. Uh, I had one uh suggestion as you were talking about the uh problem with the NICSOL alerts. Um, perhaps he could use uh NICSOL for the primary uh distribution and then have like a link to another website, maybe the city website. Or some other place, you know, Facebook or page or something where you could post the sort of follow-up information. So. People could go there and get the follow-up information so you don't have to spend money on things that aren't really uh adding a lot of value. Um, like six-eighty-twenty-four, I know we get a lot of notices on that and that's a free service, I assume. If you feed them the information, they would disseminate it. Uh, because that's what they do is news. Um, and uh, there, there might be a section in Level Lafayette, um, where we could just have sort of a police blotter, you know, and. You could just look on there in date order. The location, the what happened and the result. And then that way people can just get used to going there and finding out what happened so that you don't have to. Spend a lot of time on expensive resources. Anyway, uh, thanks for the uh update and uh. Hope we can come up with some good solutions.
Thank you. Are there any more public comments?
No additional speakers.
Thank you, Chief Aldrich.
Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
All right, we have uh, our next presentation is Mike Moran, our engineering public works director for the capital projects assessment committee update.
So good evening, mayor, vice mayor and council members. I am inviting the members of the capital projects assessment committee that are here this evening um to come join me. I think there's one still in the hallway, but unable to attend tonight are our, our current chair, Ann Farrell, our most recent uh past chair, Gary Heising. Um, but we have here uh Mike Lowman uh to my right and. Lee Thompson also on the far right and joining me, I also believe is Bob McLean. Um, who made it this evening. And I will say at this last meeting, um, well, first of all. The capital projects assessment committee is not the typical commissioner committee for Lafayette. We typically meet once or twice a year, so not every month or twice a month, like most of our commissions and committees. And, and its focus is very specific on our capital improvement program and public works, infrastructure maintenance and new projects and um. All of the members of the team here are um very well-educated in that area. They're, they're. Uh, work in construction or we're past uh our engineers or we're public works directors themselves. Um, so everybody is very familiar with the, the exact ins and outs and. Design and costs and so forth. So um, I will also mention that at our last meeting, um, we did honor Lee Thompson here. Um, for over twenty-eight years of service on CPAC and what's extremely important about that is he literally went door-to-door and campaigned. For our road and drain bond that Lafayette passed in the mid nineteen nineties. Um, so. He's probably more directly responsible for me being in front of you today than any other person um in Lafayette. Because it was because of that road and drain bond that you were able to increase your engineering staff and, you know, instead of having one person have three. Um, and do some more paving. So I was a part of that, a benefactor of that. So. With that, just briefly, uh. So with that, just briefly, the discussion we had this year was quite honestly very similar to what we had the previous year. It was, we want to, we've been raising those streets up from the mid 1990s. Our streets were in horrid condition. They were, you know, really in poor condition. And then we got that, we got that condition, the PCI, the paving condition index up to a 76, which is a very good condition. It's still at a 73, which is still considered a very good condition, 70 and above. From something that might have been in the high 40s and low 50s. So that took literally 20 years to climb that index and to touch all of our streets one time, which is basically what we've done. And now we have to maintain them. So a part of the discussion was just how can we continue to maintain them? And the hard part of that discussion is we have certain funds, revenue sources that come in that are used for street maintenance and public works projects. And those revenue sources are not growing at the same rate as construction costs. And we're getting farther away from being able to hold even or break even, if you will. Five, six years ago, I was before the council, I said, we need to spend $2.65 million a year. And the council did authorize that. And we've been spending that basically each year with, with the exception of last year, which is an exception that I'll go into. But we're catching up this year or at least trying to. And we've been able to mostly hold even. Well, that $2.65 million from however many years ago it was, not that many, is we're now closer to $4 million or $3.7 million of money that needs to go just to the streets. So that's kind of a big topic of discussion. And drawing from that is I still have those fixed revenue sources. But if we do a pathway project or we do the complete streets because we have to update an ADA ramp or there's a section of storm drain that's failed over here, all those other ancillary items are not part of that money that counts towards maintaining the street. So that's just siphoned directly from maintaining the street and we're unable to maintain it. So unfortunately, the theme of the engineering department tonight is we need more money if you want to hold the pavement condition index at what it's at right now or somewhere in this range of very good, which of course, everybody I know wants to do. But that's kind of the theme. We went over the projects that we're working on, the ongoing ones, the ones we've completed. Similar to a report that will be before you a little later this evening. And just kind of received some feedback on even they helped me with presentation and how that table might have been a little confusing because they're my first draft. And then it goes to planning commission to find that it's in compliance with the general plan before bringing the further report to the council. Hopefully to establish funding and really receive the blessing to go ahead with next year's projects. So we're talking about 2025 projects and beyond. And we also had a paving maintenance list that goes through 2028. So similar to your report later, this group reviewed sort of the map and the street list as well. So that's kind of the theme. I don't know if any of my members would like to share anything. If I was off, please let me know. But I'm grateful for, it's nice to have this group to just kind of share things back and forth. There's a lot of experience within the Capital Projects Assessment Committee. And here's my fifth. No worries. Would you like to share anything, Bob?
No, it all sounded great.
Okay. So, I mean, we're certainly open to questions, I'm sure.
Yes, thank you for the report and thank you for all your work. I know you don't meet often, but the work you do is in-depth and very important. So thank you. Are there questions from council? Now, are there comments? Oh, I'm sorry.
Sure, I'll ask a question. I've. As we think about capital improvements and expenditures, one thing I've heard in the city, maybe from 20 some years ago, was the idea that if you let the roads decline in quality, that it becomes more and more expensive to fix them and bring them to the level that we want. Because, so the most cost-effective, the most financially sound method of dealing with our capital budgets is to spend money regularly and early and prevent a decline. And I guess some other, and I've read that in our materials in Lafayette before, but I didn't see it in any of today's materials. But since we sort of, I wonder if that argument doesn't exist anymore because magically we've transcended that? Or could you, could you please clarify for myself and the public whether or not it's prudent to attack these problems earlier rather than later?
It is definitely prudent to attack earlier rather than later. There may be a nuance to that discussion that maybe didn't exist five years ago. And that will come up in when I'm asking for an award of our surface seal project later this evening. When I need a lot more money to fund it than we had budgeted. Typically, they would say the most cost-effective treatment on streets that are in good shape is a surface seal. I'm not so sure that's holding true in Lafayette. And I think I did write at least a sentence or two to that effect in that report. And we've got about five reports that are all very interrelated because we're asking to award two projects tonight. And also do our SB one project for next year, which requires a resolution so we can get our SB one funding each year from the state. What we have found on the surface seal, which is programmed into this street saver that the entire Bay Area, nine different counties use basically. But it doesn't mean it's as cost-effective as the program thinks it is. It's, to be honest, more cost-effective in Concord than it is in Lafayette. And there are so few contractors providing this service that we're seeing very high costs. And that associated with smaller streets, hills, you have to close a street with a traffic controller. It's just very expensive and it may be more cost-effective to not let the streets degrade to where they need to be reconstructed entirely, which is what happened the first time through our streets. Basically, when I was hired in 97, we had streets that were 47, 50 years old that had never been repaved. And they were failed and we had to reconstruct them. But you could basically repave, do an overlay or an inlay that may be the sweet spot in general for Lafayette. Our 2025 program is basically strictly overlays and inlays. We didn't have surface seals. That's just how the program worked out. So we'll, we'll have about a year and a half to research this better. But it all comes down to that exact question. Is it better to maintain them now? For sure, the answer is yes, but we don't know exactly how to maintain them the best. It might just be we do some patch paving, we do some crack filling. And then we wait until maybe to 20-year life and then we mill off the street and we do an inlay. So that may be the cheapest thing to do for, say, a 40, 50-year life cycle for our streets than what our program has been trying to tell us because the program and the reality of our bids are not matching up exactly. So that's a great question and it's a big topic of discussion. In fact, this group will probably talk about it more. Last year, when we met, we had not opened our two bids. And literally had written into their report that, you know, this plan is dependent on us receiving favorable bids. Well, we didn't. We did for one project, we didn't for the other. So we need to kind of balance that, take a look at that and learn from that. And also look back to last year at what happened where we sort of saw the same trend. And also check with our partners. We've got, obviously, you know, cities around us that are doing these same types of treatments and we're getting their costs as well, just like they're getting ours.
Yeah, I have one follow-up question, and that again relates to capital improvements. You guys spent, you know, you talked about the history 25 years ago where we, we've really invested a great deal in bringing all our roads up to speed. And you talked about a 40-year life or a 20-year life. But I guess as we hit the 25-year point of this project, is it like we had great roads for a decade and then we had to put money into maintaining them the next decade? But now we're really like, all of them are in really need of service. And so are we going to be hit with, are we really forecasting a larger capital expense in the years ahead? Simply because, you know, we've got 25-year-old roads that because we, of the cycle that we're in. So should we, as a city, be forecasting really significant costs in the next five years for our roads?
So that's where that $3.7 million comes in. So one thing the program does try and do is it tells you how much to spend to maintain them forever, but that's in today's dollars. So if construction costs go up 7% next year and then 11% the next year, like they've done kind of the last five years, as opposed to the maybe 2% to 3% where our revenue sources went up, we're getting farther away. So I can tell you that literally from this last month's running of our program and our analysis, that if you could, if you could spend $3.7 million a year, starting this year, in today's dollars with an inflation index tied to it, we should stay at least with the very good condition forever is the intent. So at some point, some streets have to be completely reconstructed again, but there's always some that just need some minor maintenance and then some that need something in between repaving and overlay and inlay. So it's taking all those factors into effect, but it's giving us the best program for the money you can spend. If we say we can only spend $2.7 million because that's our revenue source, you know, a million dollars less than that. And you, 10 years from now, want to look at where you're at, you will, you will start at some point to rapidly decline. It may hold even and go down one or two or three, but at some point you're going to be in the 60s. And at some point, that's not too far from the 50s if you continue that trend for five more years. But then it's going to cost even more to catch up than had you spent the $3.7 million every year in today's dollars.
You can correct me if this is wrong, but a little bit of addition to the history here. In 1995, when it was approved, there was enough money to basically repair half the roads. So it's not as if all the roads are going to come to their useful end at a certain period. Roughly half the roads got repaired and then we had three unsuccessful measures to try to fund the other half. And then we got other sources of funds and the economy was good and so we were able to do the other one. So there's basically, I think, two tiers of streets in terms of the timing. And the only other thing I'd mentioned, I remember with one of the bond measures, there's a great chart that shows how there's a steeper curve in terms of the decline of the roads. If you don't catch it here, it's going to go down faster.
Great questions. Thank you. And thank you for your answers. Any more questions? All right, is there a public comment?
Mayor Dawson, I have no speakers in the community hall, but I do have one hand raised and that would be Rob Lavoy. Rob?
Good evening again. I would like to comment on this. Perhaps the city is going to have to make some hard choices. Either not to spend money on certain projects or if there's a lot of add-on requirements to, you know, when we're required to pave a road and we have to do a bunch of stuff for ADA or drainage. It seems like we have to weigh the, you know, the need in that case. You know, the law of diminishing returns, I think, shows that we need to focus on priorities that we can afford with our limited budget. And if something's being added into the project, then I think you have to, you know, weigh those benefits with the cost. I know the EPA has been cranking down on the storm drainage requirements each year. You know, if they said we had to only put drinking water, quality water in the storm drain, obviously that would be prohibitively expensive. That's an extreme example, but, you know, there is not an unlimited amount of money in the world. And if somebody gives us requirements that are higher than what we have the ability to spend, we have to either push back or say that we're grandfathered in on certain things. We're a low services, low infrastructure city by design. And road funds should be used on the road, not on a sidewalk that either didn't exist before or maybe needs some modifications, but, you know, to make it perfect for the ADA. So anyway, that's my comments.
Thank you. I just want to comment on that. I would say that many of these improvements, so to speak, are really unfunded mandates because there are things that are regulatory. So yes, it's not necessarily a choice of whether or not we pursue these things when we're doing these projects. We do need to make sure we are following the law. So any more public comments?
No additional speakers at this time, Mayor.
All right. Thank you very much. Lee, another acknowledgement for your long service. Really do appreciate it. Thank you very much. Okay, we will move on to the consent calendar. And I understand.
Mayor Dawson, I have three speaker slips for the item 10B.
Okay. Then I will go ahead and welcome those comments now? Oh, after, okay.
You're going to remove the item from consent?
Oh, okay. I want to confirm. So is there any items? I just want to acknowledge that we did receive a request to remove item 10B from the consent calendar.
We need motion, right?
Yes.
I make a motion that we pull 10B from consent.
A second. Okay.
It's to approve the whole thing.
Right. If you approve it less.
Oh, less that.
Yeah, less that. Okay, thank you. So I have a motion by Councilmember Formic.
Make a motion to approve a consent calendar except item 10B.
All right. Thank you. Any public comment?
No comments on the other items on your consent calendar?
Oh, thank you. Okay.
Mayor Dawson, for the benefit of the public, item 10B, I just want to point out, has been pulled from consent and will be heard after the public here.
Okay. Can we make a motion to move that up earlier in the agenda? Okay, so I propose that we, that we probably should vote on the consent calendar and then move to where it should change. Can it all be in the same motion? That's what I think. So let's finish the current motion.
I think you voted on the consent calendar. So the only item left to discuss was the one you pulled. No?
Yes, we haven't taken the vote. And I would like to point out, I have, actually live in the neighborhood of two of these projects. So I'll recuse myself from that particular item. But there's a motion to approve the consent calendar less item, well, without item 10B at this time. And a second by Councilmember Candell. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I am an aye. It is unanimous. The consent calendar passes without item 10B. And I propose that we move the consent calendar up to right before item 12, staff reports. So after 11 and before 12?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. So item 10B has now been moved up to right before staff reports. Okay. All right. All right. And in that case, we will move on to opening that item up. Okay, I will remove myself from the dais and.
For the entire 10B?
Just for 10B, yes. As I understand it, this is one, all the projects are under one approval for recommendation unless.
Yeah, alternatively, we would have to hear only the two projects that are outside the neighborhood of the mayor. And you would vote as a council on those two and then take the ones that are in the, in the neighborhood of the mayor. And the mayor would have to leave the room. So you'd either have to bifurcate it or just have the, the mayor, I think, has chosen to recuse herself from the entire item.
Yes, I think that's cleanest. Okay. So Mayor, Vice Mayor Clock, I'll turn this over.
All right, the city council here, item 10B, the 2023 Traffic Calming Program, traffic calming projects that include speed bumps. Is there a staff presentation on this?
Patrick Goyer is in our virtual audience and he will be joining us right now.
Thank you.
Petrix, if you could put him up? We see you, Patrick, if you could. We see you, Patrick. If you can just let us know you're there.
Good evening, council. Are you able to hear me?
We can hear you. And, uh, why don't we just say that, uh, let's assume that the council, my fellow council members have read the staff report. So it's not necessary to give a full overview, but why don't you give us, um, a high level summary? And then, um, if, uh, why don't you start with high level summary?
Great. Okay. Um, as you're aware, in twenty twenty-three, the traffic calming program was updated. Um, and that was adopted by council in August of twenty twenty-three. Uh, there had been a, a backlog of projects, uh, applications for traffic calming, uh, for a number of years prior to that, uh, approval. Um, when the traffic calming program was re-adopted and re-upped, uh, I started the evaluation process per, uh, the description in the traffic calming guidebook. And, um, we accepted six projects into the traffic calming program. What you're seeing tonight are four of the projects, four of the six approved projects. Uh, and these are the projects where, uh, speed humps have been recommended as part of the recommendation to address traffic calming. With the final two projects that will come to council in a few weeks. Um, these four projects have gone to the Transportation and Circulation Commission and there were full hearings for all four of the, of the projects. Um, the new process requires that, uh, well, the traffic calming program remains resident-driven, um, application-based project. So these are projects that have been initiated from members of the community. And as part of the application process, applicants are required to submit, um, uh, signatures from a majority of the households that front the streets in question. And so there is, uh, it is a community-driven process. And so, uh, staff would like to go ahead and, and get, uh, listen to the public comment at this point. Um, but there is broad acceptance of these projects on these streets, um, as evidenced through the hearings that we held at the Transportation Commission a few weeks ago.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there any questions from council? Uh, seeing none, let's open it to public comment.
All right. Each speaker will have three minutes to speak and we will start with Wayne Brent, followed by Megan. And I can't read your handwriting, so Megan, step up after Brent.
Welcome. Oh, you may have to push the button there until the red light comes on the microphone, please, on your.
There it is. Thank you. My name is Wayne Brandt and I've lived at seven twenty-nine Los Palos Drive since two thousand fifteen. I am asking that the speed bump being suggested for outside my home be relocated. While many homes on the Los Palos have all of their bedrooms far from the street, my bedroom is only thirty-six feet from the proposed speed hump and the installation as proposed outside my window would definitely affect the quiet enjoyment of my home, especially my sleep. After several residents raised the issue of the location of the humps at a recent hearing, the, uh, Transportation Commission required that a new petition be submitted with the proviso that anyone signing the petition agree to the placement of the signs and speed humps outside their homes. With the number of signatories on the new petition, there should be ample possibilities to place the speed humps near those persons' homes. In addition, Mr. Goliere kindly indicated that he would work to accommodate those who didn't want the speed humps near their homes. But, but reading the staff report for today's meeting, I was surprised that it didn't include this information, the proviso and some of the objections. Um, so I wanted to just be on record that I therefore request that the consent calendar for this item be opened, which it has been, and that the city council stipulate that the city's engineers will not place speed humps outside residents' homes that object to having speed humps near their homes or at the very least that no speed hump be placed near seven twenty-nine Los Palos Drive. Thank you for your consideration and understanding.
Uh, thank you for being here. Are there any questions from the council to follow up? Uh, Councilmember Candell.
So you said seven twenty-nine Los Palos?
Right, there's a speed hump.
And I, I'm not. I went on the wrong page. Thank you. I was looking at the Glen Side Drive one. Sorry about that. Ah, here we go. The seven twenty-nine, there it is. Okay. Thank you, sir. So you were told by our engineering department that they would not place one in front of anybody's house that didn't want it.
The.
That was, I think that's what you implied.
Well, the Trans, uh, Transportation Commission explicitly put that in the, um, had that be in the requirement for the initiative that was signed. And so by implication, it was that the placement would be in front of those people's houses since they were voting for the speed humps. Now, uh, Patrick has said, yeah, we'll work with you on that and we've got some flexibility. But I felt uncertain and worried about the possibility of this just being turned over to the engineers without some explicit statement from the council that said this should be a priority and should be communicated to them.
Thank you. Thank you for the explanation. Okay.
Any other questions? Councilmember.
None of the speaker, I guess. But there's a follow-up question to Patrick, which I guess we'll, we want to wait till the speakers.
We can wait for all the speakers to speak and then we'll ask for staff, um, clarifications. Uh, thank you very much. The next speaker?
Megan, to be followed by Lynn Wang.
Is it on? Okay, great. Hi, everybody. I'm Megan Curtis. Sorry, you can read my handwriting. Um, I live on Los Palos as well and I just wanted to say on behalf of the twenty-four families who signed this petition to get these speed humps, um, implemented into our street, we are so grateful to the Transportation Committee, to Patrick, his work, to our fellow community members, and then hopefully to you all for supporting us. Um, it's been something a number of us have been working towards for five years, actually now. Um, obviously things got a little slowed down during the pandemic, but while that process got slowed down, unfortunately, the speeding just has got sped up exponentially. You like what I did there? And, um, you know, with delivery drivers and people cutting through and high school students, I mean, that we all have stories, right, in our communities and on our streets. But there are, you know, a number of us with small children, I'd say ages four to eighteen, and none of us feel safe having our children walk on the street as it is. Um, there's no sidewalks and people are just, you know, all the data showed, um, I think what you've, you've seen in Patrick's report. So just want to say we're so thankful, um, for this opportunity. I will have a speed hump outside, uh, my house. Actually, it's my front, uh, my front window where I sleep. Um, and I'm kind of of the opinion, and I know there's a number of us, anything we can do to, you know, slow people down even a, a one mile per hour, anything we can do to help elderly who are walking on our street, the children, pets. I just think we really have an obligation and I want to thank the city and all of our community members for being, you know, so pro, uh, Vision Zero and, um, really hearing us after this long journey. We're really appreciative. Thanks.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? No? Thank you very much. Next speaker?
Lynn Wang, followed by Mike Slater.
Welcome.
Hello, is this on? Okay. City Council, I want to thank you for your time. I'm going to echo a lot of Megan's comments. My name is Lynn Wang and my husband Stan Shing and I live at seven fifty Los Palos, um, with our two daughters, Abby, age six, and Amelia, age eight, who's here taking good care of our pet triceratops, Tops. Um, last night, uh, last time we met at the Traffic Commission, um, we had a spirited conversation. I wanted to highlight some of the things that we learned and I want to echo, um, Megan's gratitude for the Traffic Commission and all of Patrick's hard work, um, and hearing the agenda and preparing the report. So we learned that we do have a speeding problem, forty-nine percent and forty-three percent, depending on which direction you're going, um, exceed the speed limit, um, and nine percent go over thirty miles per hour. We had multiple neighbors, at least a dozen, I actually tried to go back to the minutes to count the number of talkers, but I, uh, couldn't find that, um, ranging from fourth grader Brooks Jaeger, who bikes on the street regularly, to family, um, to others showing concerns about well, elderly's walking on our street as well as dog walkers. Um, two main theme, themes, I think, emerged from all of the comments. The first is that everyone who lives on Los Palos loves the street, absolutely loves living here. We all appreciate the beauty of it. Um, we take pride in, in, in the block. We take pride in other Lafayette fellow, Lafayette residents enjoying, enjoying strolling on the block. The second main theme that emerged, uh, especially among those who are concerned with the problem, is the excessive speeds, um, the speeds of going, the nine percent going over thirty miles per hour and the desire to avoid a catastrophically terrible event. We know there's a lot of data that with the increase of each, uh, miles per hour in speed, the reaction time becomes that much more important and critical. We heard of speed-related car accidents, one of which occurred outside of my house, recycling bins getting knocked over by speeding vehicles and a number of near pedestrian misses. Um, and we learned that from Patrick's report that speed humps are effective at eliminating excessive speeds over thirty miles per hour, which would address this key concern that's shared by the neighbors. Um, the feedback that we received, um, would be, whi- which was that there, that this could be approved, um, contingent upon a majority of the residents supporting the speed humps. I personally appreciated that feedback, um, and I'm glad that we had a chance to transparently collect the opinion of the block. We had, um, thirty-five homes who are eligible to, um, cast an opinion on this and of that, twenty-four homes signed in support of, um, speed humps, which is sixty-nine percent, which is over a two-thirds majority. So I just want to, uh, close by saying I strongly recommend us approving these speed humps on, uh, on this Los Palos block. Thanks.
Thank you very much for your comments. Any questions from the council? Nope? Okay, thank.
My last speaker is Mike. And if you could. Okay. No additional speakers at this time, Vice Mayor Quoc.
Okay. Thank you very much. Then we'll bring it back to, um, staff if you'd like to, uh, respond to any of the questions or concerns in the public comment.
Uh, the, the comment that I'm, uh, would like to respond to is, um, Wayne's comment about that engineering is, uh, will commit to working with him to try to place the speed hump, uh, not adjacent to his house. Um, that's common practice. Mike and Matt do that with all of our speed hop projects in the, in the past and we've been successful in doing that. But we do have, uh, limitations to where speed humps can go. And so without actually getting out there and physically citing it, um, like I said, we are committed to, to, um, to working with him. Um, but we have to make sure that we're avoiding driveways and utilities, um, and that there's enough site distance for drivers. So there are some engineering, um, limitations and requirements, um, that are required in order to cite speed humps correctly.
Thank you. Can you also comment on the different type of speed bumps out there? There are some that are more pronounced and there are some that are more gradual. Are, what is being planned for this street?
Our, our standard design today are what you might see in Burton Valley. Um, those were installed three, maybe three or four years ago and those were our standard designs. So that the height are, uh, uh, between three and three and a half inches high, uh, with a ramp, um, you know, a, a ramp that is gradual. Um, and so, uh, it's, it's not jarring like a, like a parking lot speed bump. These are, um, designed so that if you are going the speed limit, it will not, it's not intended to be jarring.
Okay, is that from a noise reduction or any other such a thing? Is it, is it less invasive or less disturbing, uh, this design compared to a parking lot one?
Well, I mean, we've not gotten negative, uh, feedback from the community in Burton Valley where there were eleven speed humps that were installed over the past year. So, uh, in terms of, you know, feedback from the community after the speed humps are constructed, um, we're not getting the, the, we're not hearing about the negative impacts of speed humps. With that said, we still will try to accommodate requests for placement.
Thank you very much. Uh, comments, uh, from council or questions of staff from the council, uh, Councilmember Candell?
Thank you. Um, so I do have a question. If, if for some reason, you know, on the worst case scenario, you can't find a good solution between, um, Mr. Grant and where you guys want to put it, you know, between all these other limitations, what is the process? Like if Mr. Grant isn't happy with it and, and what, what would go forward?
Uh, like I said, we'll, we'll, we will do our best and that's, that's what I can commit to. Where I, I will stay in close communication with Mr. Brandt, um, as well as his neighbors. Um, I have gotten a few emails since the Transportation Commission meeting from people who have opted to have that hump in front of their houses and people who have recommended that it not be placed in front of their houses. So I will work with Mike to try to accommodate all those requests. And so, you know, what I've done for Los Palos is that there are three clear sec, subsegments of that long stretch of Los Palos between two Glen Sides. And my recommendation is to put a hump in each of those three sections. And, um, I, I think, I think we should be able to accommodate the request, given where Mr. Brandt's house is.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And no, no further comments from the council, then, um, I'll, I, I think we have, oh, okay, Councilmember Endury.
Looking for a motion?
Yes, I'm looking. I was about to say I'll take a motion.
First, my, my comment would be, this is an excellent staff report. I, it was just very, very clear. It reflected a lot of work on your part, on the, uh, Transit Commission's part, cooperation from the neighborhood. Uh, it was great to see this. So thank you very much to everyone involved with this. And with that, I will move that. Uh, we authorize staff to construct the proposed traffic calming projects on Akalas Avenue, Condit Road, Glen Side Drive and Los Palos Drive, uh, using the traffic calming sinking fund.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then we have one abstention then. So it's four, zero, one. Motion passes.
Just really quickly, under the understanding that he is going to try to work with Mr. Grant.
Thank you to our public speakers for being here and giving public comment. We appreciate that.
All right. Um, it is eight o'clock and it is two hours into our council meeting, so I'd like to take a quick break. Uh, so if we can return at, um, I guess it is eight oh two, uh, eight, eight ten to round it out. Thank you. Don't be late.
All right, it is eight ten and we will resume city council meetings starting with Agenda Item twelve A. That is the capital improvement program update and proposed twenty twenty-five projects. Mike Moran, welcome back.
Thank you. Good evening again, council. So the theme for, again, engineering is capital improvement projects and usually in conjunction with the Capital Projects Assessment Committee, I do an update to the council on, these are the projects we've done, these are what we're working on and these are the projects proposed. And with the proposed ones, looking for funding and, and basically direction to pursue those projects. So that's why we're here this evening. So I, I don't have a big show and tell because I gave it to you in the report itself with a lot of photos and so forth. So, you know, just highlighting some of the completed projects, paving projects, pathway projects, the library children's deck, Mount Diablo Court's traffic signal. We're continuing our safety improvements near schools and in fact, one of the projects later tonight that we're awarding, we'll, we'll pick up a couple of the still remaining items like the raised crosswalks from the safety improvement near schools project that we started a couple of years ago. I did have that stabilized slide at the Batwing, which was not a planned project. That was, you know, a storm project and we are, we have submitted for FEMA reimbursement from that. Parks, Trails and Rec had some funding that paid for the majority of that and engineering absorbed some of it, but we're hoping to get reimbursed. So there's, there's a photo of the retaining wall and the stabilized hillside there in your report. And then, you know, we go along to talk about some of the ongoing projects, the school street project, the BART project, and then the new projects, which really are very few new ones, but I will put up a, in addition to the couple that we planned for twenty twenty-five, I have a five-year paving program that I've also given you as an attachment. So that basically you could see the streets that we plan to maintain through twenty twenty-eight. Touching on the earlier, earlier discussion, that is not a program that gives us three point seven million dollars a year. That's a, that's a program that gives us the two point six thereabouts because that's the funding we anticipate we'll have unless we find additional funding. So the program through twenty twenty-eight is basically a program that we believe we can fund, provided costs don't continue to rise super rapidly. So however, but for the twenty twenty-five projects, and Tracy, could I ask you? Okay, I'm gonna just put up, I think it's like sheet eleven or thirteen, but the table in this staff report is, is really the only discussion item on the CIP before I get to the request for recommendations. And. Yes, please.
Petrix, can you see the source? There it goes.
Basically, we're getting to the table, if you have it, I believe it's sheet thirteen of your report. I could find that for sure. It is. And there it is. So I've added just a couple color coatings to this. And, and basically on the first line, I have proposed this next year twenty twenty-five paving repair project, which includes St. Mary's Road and some other locations. And you can see the total is, is a little less than three million dollars and that does include some of the ancillary things. So that's basically trying to utilize the, the maximum funds we would normally have to maintain paving our streets. And we're actually would be about four hundred and sixty thousand dollars short next year for that project because we can't use every, every penny of our revenue sources because we're allocating some three hundred and seventy thousand dollars to the construction of the school topper. That was approved last year and I did basically say we will need more matching funds for this multi-year project last year to be taken out of the Measure J for this year. And then on the next line, I have the Hampton Mount Diablo RFB crossing where I'm actually requesting a hundred and fifty thousand of that. Now the council could decide, no, we don't want to, we don't want to do that project. We want to put it towards the pavement repair and you'd be a little closer to being whole on that project. However, two things about the Mount Diablo R, R RFB, basically a flashing beacon crossing. One is, I don't know if you recall, but we requested a grant from TDA and at the time we asked for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Well, we've now been notified we'll be awarded, but only fifty thousand dollars. So at the time I had also anticipated, maybe we can do this as a hawk and actually have mast arm poles that could be converted to a, a full signal in the future if need be. At this point, with only fifty thousand dollars in matching funds, I would not recommend that. But I still would recommend that we do a flashing beacon crossing. And to do the site work and the ramps and the center median protection and just our normal flashing beacon on standing poles, I believe we can do that for two hundred thousand dollars. So I would be requesting per this sheet, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for that project out of our Measure J funds that couldn't be used for the paving project. Because of that, in talking with our administrative services director, Tracy, and she could weigh in if you would like, but the only other source of funding I have to make that project whole would be some ARPA funds. And I would need that not only for next year's project, but to award this year's project later in this meeting tonight. Of a million dollars total, five hundred and forty thousand would go towards tonight's project and four hundred and sixty thousand would go towards this. So you'll see those numbers cross-referenced through about three different reports tonight. I believe they're all consistent and they're all asking the same thing, just at different reports for different projects. So the reason I have the three green are I need four hundred and sixty thousand dollars to make next year's project whole. At least in addition to the typical revenue sources we have for paving and maintenance. And part of the reason I don't have it is because we would be utilizing it on matching funds for other projects, specifically the Hampton Mount Diablo Crossing and the school topper St. Mary's project. Then I have going down two more lines in yellow highlight here. The St. Mary's Road bank stabilization, recall I did an emergency repair a year and a half ago along St. Mary's Road and I said we will apply for federal funds for that. I have applied for those funds, it's, it's in its ongoing process. It's FHWA, not FEMA and that's handled through Caltrans. But there will be matching funds associated with that. So if I'm ever to do a permanent restoration there, and I believe we will get the funding, we will need matching funds for design and construction, probably in the order of about a hundred thousand dollars. So I have that in yellow because again, I don't have a funding source to get that hundred thousand dollars, other than perhaps the general fund. Similarly, the Campana building demolition, that would be from our facilities budget, which we don't have a balance in at this time. So we estimate it'd be about two hundred thousand dollars if we were to demolish and make that a safe parking lot basically for use. So there's two hundred thousand dollars. So the reason I put those in yellow in discussions with Tracy Robinson is that she's working on the entire budget for the city. These are probably items that we could look at and could come with the full budget ask in June. I don't need, I don't need necessarily an answer on these two items tonight, but would like an answer on the green top line basically. Because I need to submit an SB one project to the state, so I have kind of a deadline associated with that. The rest is, you know, our overhead here that we put here and if, and just for information's sake, the carryover projects are the bottom half of the sheet. We will be continuing the pathway project in front of Spring Hill School. The smart signals you heard about recently with your Tri-Cities meeting, that's an ongoing project. The bridge maintenance design is just in fact that, a design for maintaining several of our bridges in town and that's a requirement through the federal bridge program. I will also be submitting in the future requests for funding for the actual construction projects, but the design is what's ongoing right now. The pathway design and construction, St. Mary's topper, that's the Connect Lafayette that you've heard so much about and that's where I needed some of the Measure J funds from this year for the approved project from last year. And then finally, the, the BART head bike project, there are still both Measure J and Measure RR federal funds that are still allocated to that. For literally two years, we didn't have any, any progress with that project. It was in BART's hands for literally two years. We did recently get it back. We've given it to our designer to try and consolidate a package. I have some hope now that we can put together a package. Staff had a meeting with some of the BART representatives because on the Measure RR, we're not familiar with how to work those contracts and what specification language to have. They have different like disadvantaged communities and, and different, or just, excuse me, DBE, disadvantaged business enterprises and things like that that are different than we are used to. So they have their own program. We're trying to learn about that and incorporate that into a total package. But we don't have their estimates still, so we, we are still waiting for a thing or two from them. Nonetheless, after two years, we finally got some movement on that project. I hope that we can get a package out to bid and at that point, we'll learn, do we have enough funding or not? But we'll actually have a, a cost. I will say the funding was, was pretty generous originally on that. So I am hopeful that we can pay for that with the funding that we have. So those were just for information, they're ongoing and, and carryover projects. But really, the request from tonight is, is more about the paving project. So getting to my recommendations, in line with the yellow there, I would just say defer approval for the St. Mary's Road bank stabilization and raising the Campana building until the full budget is considered in June. Use the four hundred and sixty thousand dollars in ARPA funds to cover the shortfall for the twenty twenty-five pavement maintenance project. That's really the big hard ask and I've, by the way, never been in this position where I've had to ask the council for something like that. We have always done a pretty good job covering these projects and had a, a way to fund them. But with those ARPA funds, we could be whole tonight and next year, for this year and next year. And then we can see, but at least we, we would keep the ship afloat for two more years in good condition. So then adopt the proposed twenty twenty-four capital improvement program, accepting the St. Mary's and Campana and the five-year maintenance program and allocate funding per staff's proposed, proposed funding sources. And then on that project particularly, authorize staff to file a notice of exemption. And then on that project particularly, authorize staff to file a notice of exemption for the twenty-four, twenty-five capital program projects. So I'm open to questions. I would like to fund tonight those top two lines where I've got the green, but obviously, that is up to the council to decide.
Thanks, Mike, for the report. Appreciate you. The ask is hard because there's such great work you're doing and covering these things. Are there questions from council?
Councilwoman McCormick. Yeah, thank you, Mike. A couple of questions. The, we said we're gonna postpone talking about Campana or Saint Mary's till next month. Does approving or rejecting that have anything, has no impact then on your four hundred and sixty thousand dollar ask?
It does not.
Okay, there, right. Okay, then we'll, I won't worry about, I have a couple of questions there, but we'll wait. The second, on your, the, we're treating the Connected Streets project, or the, you know, it's the topper school, as one bucket. Is that possible with a single number? Is there more detail there we can kind of see for each segment? Because obviously, each segment's kind of different, right? We have Saint Mary's, it's just design, and so on. Right now, we're looking at the one. It's hard to kind of
Yeah, I mean, if we were to get to construction, so there is a Saint Mary's design, which is pulled out, and that's two hundred thousand dollars that was allocated specifically from the council, and that is kind of being kept in its own pot.
So even though it says Saint Mary's?
Yes. So I'm treating, because there is a portion of the funded earmark and Measure, you know, OBAG three project that includes Saint Mary's. It's the section between Bird Haven and Topper, the connection around the horn, if you will.
Right, right.
And then there's a design for in front of the school, that block of Saint Mary's, basically. So that is being kept separate.
Okay, so we have what, part of Saint Mary's and part of Saint Mary's is?
Right. There are two parts to Saint Mary's. One is already been approved for construction, one just for design.
Okay.
And the amount would be two hundred thousand dollars that was allocated to the just design.
Just design part, and we don't really cede that.
It is, it is in that total. That's correct. So it would, you could take out, and it'd be four, four twenty. But I will say, we've used some of that money already.
Right.
Because we allocated it last year.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? No? May I take public comment?
The mayor is taking comments on item twelve A one. And we have one speaker slip for persons in the community hall, and that is Lauren Herbig. And we have no hands raised currently, so if you want to speak on this item, raise your hand.
Lauren Herbig, hey, Mike, just a quick question. With the ARPA funding, are we able to replenish that money again? I just, I have a real concern about using ARPA funding for street pavement. That really isn't the reason for ARPA funding. So I just, that's my one big question on that one.
Thank you. Any more public comment?
No additional public comment.
All right. ARPA funding is one-time funding, I just want to say, and it's for making part of what it is for is also for making cities whole of revenue that we lost during COVID. So it could be used for this type of project because we have deficits that multiple reasons and part of it can also be due to the impacts we felt from COVID. So. Any other comments? Okay. All right, I'll bring this back to talk about recommendations. Would, does anybody have any additional discussion or comments to make?
Yeah, well, just mentioned the ARPA Subcommittee did meet with Tracy, and the ARPA Subcommittee does recommend the use of the ARPA funds for these purposes.
Thank you for that. Okay, is there any other discussion about this?
Sure. I mean, one of the thoughts that I had in looking at this was the same question. Is it appropriate to use ARPA funds on our roads? I guess that's what I was thinking of. I'm glad that the Subcommittee met because I wanted to ask, what is your view on whether this is an appropriate use of funds? And I guess where I came down on it is I think the ARPA funds are there to help cities get through a difficult time in a pandemic, right? There was a lot of negative impacts, and one of the things that happened coming out of it was really high inflation, very high prices. And I think what I've seen, at least for our city, is that the cost of our roadwork is really gone up significantly, and it hasn't come down as much as other construction costs over time. I do think that that is related to the impact of the pandemic on us. And so I do see that it makes sense to use, deploy ARPA funds. If we, you know, if we were not deploying it for other purposes, if it was just, if it was sitting there and available to us, I could see us using it to help us do something for our infrastructure, and our roads are our most significant infrastructure, as we talked about before. It's probably the best way to, most prudent use of our cash because it would cost us more if we don't do it late now than later, as we talked about before. So I do think if the intent of ARPA funds was to help cities to mitigate the damage and harm that we felt from those years, that I've come to think that this is an acceptable use of funds. As to the other recommendations, I agree, we should, at least on the Campana Building, we should defer that cost expenditure until later and not expend those funds today. And so, but for the rest of the items, I'm in support of the staff recommendations.
Thank you. Any other discussion? In that case, Vice Mayor Quoc, if you're in support, would you like to make the motion?
Okay, I move that we defer approval for the Saint, I'd like to make a motion to defer approval of the Saint Mary's Road Bank stabilization and raising the Campana Building until the full budget is considered in June. Number two, use four hundred and sixty thousand in ARPA funds to cover the shortfall for the twenty twenty-five pavement maintenance project. Number three, that we adopt the proposed twenty twenty-four, twenty-five capital improvement program, accepting Saint Mary's Road Bank and Campana and the five-year pavement maintenance program, and allocate funding per staff's proposed funding sources. And four, that we authorize staff to file a notice of exemption for the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five capital program projects and for the added storm drain project to be completed this year.
A second? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I am an aye, that is unanimous to support the recommendations of staff. Thank you, Mike. Okay, I was like, okay. Great.
Thank you for that action, council.
Okay, so we will move on then to the next item, which is the award of construction contract for the twenty twenty-four road paving project.
Okay, so this is asking for award. Honestly, this would have been on consent because everything about this part went really well. We got good bids. They were lower than engineers' estimates. The bids that were above the estimate were within reason. We feel good about the contractor. He did work for us last year, so we're asking for a war. The only thing a little different about this or to point out is Contra Costa County is joining forces with us to utilize our contract to patch pave the very poor-conditioned street northbound Pleasant Hill Road. If anyone's driven out of Pleasant Hill towards Pleasant Hill Road, if you get to Relise Valley Road, about two hundred feet past that, it's actually Contra Costa County's jurisdiction. Many of us have gotten phone calls to please fix that, but we've been referring them to the county, and they've been working with us to sign on to this project because we are also working on Pleasant Hill Road. So we're happy to do that. Well, Lafayette won't get the phone calls too when we fix that. So just asking for a war on this, staff feels like we got good value on this particular project. I mean, we haven't built it yet, but based on the bids and the contractor, all indications are this should be a good project. And this is also where we're absorbing two of the raised crosswalks that we needed to work into a contract and do design for as part of the safety improvements near schools.
Great. Are there any questions?
I just had a quick question. The, I'm just kind of curious because as I think, what you alluded to in your, in the capital improvements committee, and we'll talk about next, about how we have such overage with the, you know, surface seal, which we understand because, you know, labor costs and insurance costs and all this stuff. I mean, why, any idea why? It's because there's more competition here?
Yes, that is by far the largest reason. I mean, we had more bids. We had a local bidder want this project. In the past, we've had other local bidders like Bay Cities, where the owner lives in Arinda, and would tell me a month ahead of time, I'm going to bid that really low, you know, because I want to pave my backyard, you know. So there's just more contractors, and they're happy to work right here if they're from right here. So.
It's a different skill set.
And it's a different skill set.
Okay.
And we'll get to the, yeah, the next one real quick.
Thank you. I was just kind of curious because it was a delightful report to read. The next one was.
Okay, if there are no more questions, I'll turn it over to public comment.
Mayor Dawson, we have no public comments on item twelve A two.
All right, then I will bring it back to council. Is there any discussion, or would we like to move on the recommendation?
I'll make a motion to award the construction contract to JV Lucas Paving, Inc. in the amount of two point three five one seven nine eight point three five million for the twenty twenty-four road paving project number zero one four dash ninety-seven forty-one.
All in favor? Oh, is there a second? I'm sorry. Like, a second? Okay. A motion by Vice Mayor Quoc, seconded by Councilmember Candell. All in favor? I am an aye, that is unanimous to award the construction contract to JV Lucas Paving. All right. Move on to the next item, which is the award of construction contract for the twenty twenty-four surface seal project.
Yeah, this was probably my least favorite bid opening in twenty-seven years. So we've had a few bad ones, but usually, we, sometimes we do still have one that's pretty reasonable and low, and another one that's higher, but combined, they work out okay, and we can award both of them with the workable budget. This was so high that we weren't able to do that. But if you recall to last year, just a little background for this, when we learned that Saint Mary's Road was going to be deferred because of East Bay MUD's planned pipeline project, staff had thrown out the idea of, we'll put together a small surface seal project so we don't get too far behind on our pavement condition index. So we do some paving last year, in addition to the pavement project we had, which was like Glen Side and Olympic primarily. And we did do that. We put out the bids. We also got two bids. I think they were the same bidders. They were both very high, and we just figured it was later in the season, then we went out for bid. This is an anomaly. Let's reject all bids. We'll regroup it as a much bigger package next year, and we'll come out better. Unfortunately, we didn't come out better. We did regroup it as a bigger package. Staff does recommend doing this so that we can maintain and even recapture some of our pavement condition index score, and it's just really high. In talking to others, it's high for them too, maybe not this high per square yard of actually applied surface seal. I mentioned earlier, we have, you know, we have smaller sections of streets. We have, you know, pretty stringent traffic control requirements. We want them to keep people off of it when it's wet, and others aren't as quite as stringent on them. But really, we did actually reach out to the low bidder on this and just kind of ask, why is it so high? And they went over a few reasons. There is some concrete work along with this. It includes the roundabout taper on Pleasant Hill Road going towards Olympic, the taper from two lanes to one that we've been talking about for three years, so we do want to get that completed. It does include a sidewalk section in front of Diamond K next to the city offices. Staff's been talking about that for thirty years because it's a little bit of a difficult course, walking amongst the trucks being loaded with the back, with the forklifts right across the walkway. It's, you know, this will have a more defined walkway and sidewalk, and there'll be a clear loading and unloading zone. So we believe that to be not just a walkway added, but a safety project as well. So for all those reasons, we do want to award it. We're sorry it doesn't represent the best value we've seen. We don't believe it does. We're not doing, as I mentioned earlier tonight, a surface seal next year, and we'll probably reevaluate that for the following year, in part by looking at the data from the bids around the region from this year and next year, and kind of weigh in on that and use that to help mold our future pavement maintenance program. So, you know, the streets that you saw planned out to twenty twenty-eight on the previous report may get changed so that we can get the best value for the money moving forward. But at this time, we're in a tough spot, and we do recommend that we recommend that we award this project. And it would take five hundred and forty thousand dollars from the ARPA. So where that came from was basically one million dollars towards paving projects that we were hoping to get more value and more streets done with, and instead, we're just trying to make them whole for this year and next year.
Thanks, Mike. Are there questions from council?
So just a follow-up on that, then, this to the second half of the conversation, then. Do you expect, and so you're not expecting next year, the competitive situations are going to change, right? I mean, we have the two, you have the same two bidders from last year as this year, and you anticipate that's just not going to change next year? Because you would think a company could look at the opportunity here. It's like, wow, I can make some money with, you know, doing surface seals. Why don't I just get into this, this, instead of the more competitive paving? So, but you're anticipating everything. That's my question is, everything is going to stay status quo as far as you know?
I think more like you. I'm kind of thinking I should be a surface seal contractor myself.
There you go.
Because honestly, this is a great opportunity for somebody to make quite a bit of money. They have a whole pavement maintenance program, region-wide, nine counties wide, that are really pushing this treatment, and yet there's very few contractors. This is not easy, fun work to do. Surface seals are tough. Residents don't like them. They're messy. They don't give you a nice, smooth surface, but what they do is rejuvenate your pavement and protect it so that it wears out much slower, and it extends the life. So it's the bang for the buck, but it's not the job that everybody wants to do. It comes with a lot of grief. One thing I'm hoping to see over the next two years is that more companies will throw their hat into the ring and step up, and maybe we'll get eight or ten bidders in this area instead of four. And, you know, with only two of those trickling to Lafayette. So. Yeah, I don't know, though. All we can do is watch the market. But I agree. I think there's opportunity out there, and I think things can change. I mean, contractors do adjust to these types of things.
Right. Okay, well, thank you. Thank you for your thoughts on that.
Any other questions? Okay, I'll take public comment.
Mayor Dawson, there are no comments on item twelve A three.
Okay, then we will bring it back. And to discussion or to recommendations, I just want to reiterate that the ARPA team did meet and talk about this, and again, also supports this usage. It would cost us more money not to do this later, and it seems like the prudent thing to do, and it also is a priority of our constituents by the survey. One of the biggest things is, is street conditions. So is there any other discussion, or shall we move to recommendation?
All right, I'd be happy to move that we award a construction contract to VSS International in the amount of two point four eight one million for the twenty twenty-four surface seal project number zero one four dash ninety-seven forty. And secondly, that we allocate a million dollars of ARPA funding for street maintenance projects in Fund O one four with five hundred and forty thousand dollars to cover the twenty twenty-four surface seal project shortfall and four hundred and sixty thousand dollars to be added to the twenty twenty-five pavement maintenance project.
Second?
Thank you. All in favor? Aye. And I have an aye. It is unanimous to award the contract and allocate the ARPA funding. Thank you, Mike. And Mike, you are up again.
Finally, this is my last one, I promise. Yeah, thank you. This is more a formality to what you have already done. We do need a resolution for the twenty twenty-five pavement maintenance program that I submit to the state so that we can get our SB one funding, and that's basically recommendation number one. And, and number two is redundant in case any of these, you know, you could see they, they mismatch or they crisscross each other. So is allocate 460,000 of ARPA funds for use to fund 25 pavement maintenance project. I threw that in there again, because the state does like this to be kind of an independent. Motion by the council and they do want to know that it would be funded. So there's the two recommendations.
Okay, just want to clarify then, when we say that allocate 460, do we need to define it as, as anything different? So it doesn't look like it's an additional? Okay.
No, it, it is really just a reiterance of half of recommendation two that you just approved for the previous report.
Part of that. All right. Are there any questions on this item from council? Okay, is there any public comments?
Mayor Dawson, we do not have any public comments.
I think Lauren's.
Oh, we're going to have a public comment from Lauren Herpik.
Hi, council. Just a follow up. So I understand the ARPA subcommittee has decided to make this recommendation. I do want to just reiterate that. While it is now seen that the public has spoken that we want to have. Well, pristine roads and I agree. The public has spoken over the years too, that they also want parks and dog parks and a vibrant downtown. And amenities that will also help contribute to our community. One of those things that I saw during COVID was that a number of our downtown residents do not have outdoor places to play. We've had friends over to our house to come to our little postage stamp of a backyard. And they said, this is so nice. My kid has not been able to play anywhere for the last two years. We, because we have been in an apartment. And now with this, we're now allocating almost a million and a half dollars to street paving. Now, I love that. I love having a nice brand new street. But I will say back in 2015, we also went through the street paving program. Maraga Boulevard was beautiful and pristine. Eight years later, it is a patchwork of patches. So if we're going to be spending all of this money on street paving. I'd also encourage the city to also do any sort of advanced incentive programs. For homeowners and businesses to take care of any underlying infrastructure work. And I know Mike and I have talked about this in the past. But it's been only eight years. Maraga Boulevard went from having a very pristine, very beautiful paved road. And that doesn't exist anymore. So if we're going to spend this money, this one time ARPA funding, we could have a park. For 20 plus years. Or we can have a patchwork of roads. That may look really beautiful for just a handful. So please put that in perspective. Thanks.
Thank you.
Mayor Dawson, I have no additional speakers at this time.
All right, thank you. I'll bring it back. Any discussion? No further comments or questions? Okay.
Make a motion to authorize using SB1 funds for Lafayette's 2025 pavement maintenance project. And adopt resolution number 2024-20. And secondarily, to allocate $460,000 of ARPA funds for use to fund the 2025 pavement maintenance project.
All right, I will second that one.
Thank you. All in favor of the recommendations and the motion?
Aye.
I am an aye and it is unanimous. Thank you, Mike, for all that work and detail. Okay. Oh, we will now move on to item 12B. Jonathan Katianagi, the potential acquisition of property at 221 Lafayette Circle.
Petrix Johnson has a presentation if you could make, thank you.
Okay, good evening, council, members of the public. I'm Jonathan Katianagi, the Parks, Trails and Recreation Director for the City of Lafayette. And I come to you this evening with two things. The first is a parkland opportunity and the second is a difficult decision. As a, the part, the parcel that we're looking at is 221 Lafayette Circle. It's 1.3 acres of, that is currently serves as a parking lot that's unavailable to the public. It is currently fenced in. There are 10 parking spaces on the Flog Lot that is located in the Shield Block. It is its own special retail business. And park is not a listed opportunity. However, there are other retail business areas that have parks listed in the downtown specific plan. So it is a potential use that the city has placed on this sort of zoning in the past as well. This parcel comes to you with a recommendation from the Parks, Trails and Recreation Commission to consider the parkland. They are not recommending a specific use at this time. They've actually asked that this park subcommittee continue to look at a potential use for this parcel. They discussed several potential uses. They agreed that it could potentially serve as parkland. But they couldn't decide on a specific use, the size being the biggest limiting factor for the parcel. The available documents this evening are my staff report as well as a report prepared by volunteer park and rec commissioners. Neither of the two reports were approved by the Parks, Trails and Recreation Commission before they came forward. So the report that is attached to my staff report is the work of three volunteer parks commissioners that were working with me. However, the recommendations in the report do not represent the recommendation from the Parks, Trails and Recreation Commission. So those recommendations should not be taken as coming from the Parks, Trails and Recreation Commission. I've created a couple of short lists of pros and cons for you to consider this evening. I'm sure you've read my staff report and have several others that you may consider and discuss this evening. In the pros column, it's strange to list this first, but the parkland just being an opportunity. Having a willing seller is going to become one of the most important things for parkland moving forward. As we've looked at identified parkland parcels. As they've come forward in years, in recent years. They sell faster than I could even get them to the parks commission before, sometimes before I can even send my first email over to one of my parks commissioners. So having a property owner that is willing to negotiate with the city is a key feature in this property. We do have funds available to purchase parkland. There's about $3.5 million available to purchase parklands at this time. And it's fun that is specific to purchasing parkland. So this is separate from the general fund. It's separate from our facilities funds. These are parkland acquisition funds that are collected when there's development and can only be used to purchase parkland. We do have funds allocated in the city's budget for appraisals. So the process often is that the city would declare an interest in the property. And if they determined that they were, wanted to negotiate the property, we could work to obtain an appraisal. For the property to determine what that value might be, work with the property owner to purchase that property. We cannot purchase the property for more than fair market value. So the appraisal is an important tool often in moving forward with a potential parkland. Let's see, the location is adjacent to 66 apartments. Immediately adjacent to that, there are otherwise hundreds in the downtown that are within walkable distance. But immediately adjacent to this parkland, there's 66 apartments. There are existing utilities on the site. There's lighting, drainage, water and electricity that, that go to the site. So there are some existing utilities. One of the pros that's going to lead into our cons. And I think it's appropriate that we are following all the, the work of the Mike and Public Works in the engineering department. The small size of the park could mean lower maintenance cost. One of our biggest challenges right now is maintaining our existing facilities. So a smaller parcel, smaller facility, there's an upside to that. There's less to maintain. The cons of the site potentially are the maintenance and facility development cost. We're facing a general fund deficit. Maintenance is going to be a challenge. We just had to allocate ARPA one time spending for the roads, maintaining the parks and many of the other. General fund, general fund maintenance costs that I've listened to the report, including the, the community center. Our parking lots at the other parks, as well as the Buckeye Meeting Room and several other unfunded needs that we're facing in the parks. The downside of this is we have a need to expand our park system based on our current population. But the funds to maintain the park system are the challenge that we're going to face moving forward. We also have uncertainty following the development fees. We have a forecast of over $3 million in development fees right now that could come in for both the facilities fund and the parkland fund. We're not sure of the timing of that funding with construction, the way that it's moving right now. As well as when we will be paid for those specific projects. Many developers are opting to pay on occupations. So we're going to see those funds later in the process than we've seen them in the past. We also have conflicting interests. Council during their goal setting discussed our need to develop a development agreement with the, potentially with the De Silva property. That may have a civic use that could include parkland. We are currently working on the two parks collaborative concept. That will need maintenance funds if it becomes a parkland as well as funds to develop it as a facility. There is a nonprofit that's raising funds to help with that. But that's kind of what it's come to when we're looking at parks is that we've used up all of our facility funds. And we're having to turn to the public and these nonprofits if we want to advance our parkland opportunities. Let's see, the specific site is also not listed in any of the city plans. The downtown specific plan lists three park opportunities. The town green, which would be around where the Roundup Saloon is. We have the Library Park, which is on the Madison, Madison site, which is otherwise. Has received its approvals without the parkland opportunity that would have been Library Park. As well as Gazebo Park that's moving forward as a smaller opportunity. Because we haven't been able to acquire the, the additional parcels to develop the full park. So when we're looking at parkland opportunities in the downtown. This is kind of what we're up against until we get to looking at the downtown specific plan in the form of the Mount Diablo Corridor Plan again. Because our, the opportunities that we do have listed, we're finding hard to seek and hard to develop. Let's see. So then the recommendation this evening is to consider the acquisition of the property. If you felt that you wanted to move forward with these, this, you could declare your intent, go into closed session. At that time, you begin a negotiation process. Any decision tonight isn't a decision to necessarily acquire the property. This is to move into that process. It is, like I said, not an easy decision at this time. The Parks and Trails and Recreation Commission, I have to be very fair to them. And the report that you see tonight even had more detail than what they were able to see as it came forward. There were a lot of things to weigh in with this property, but in some ways we have to move quickly when these parkland opportunities come up. Because like I said, they come and go very quickly. Sometimes we can't even get the information out to our commissioners or all the way up to council. So it is a unique opportunity in that we have a property owner that is willing to negotiate with us. It's additionally unique opportunity because it's running a dual track. They actually have an application in to develop the site as a single family home. We've kept that process very separate. Myself and the Parks, Trails and Recreation Commission have been working to review this as a site. The planning team has been working with the applicant to review their site as well. But the applicant has remained very open to our discussions in this process. So with that, I'm here for any questions?
Thank you, Jonathan. Questions from council?
Just a couple, yeah, do, sorry. So you mentioned in the report, there's talk about some Native American artifacts that were found in the site. In the 60s or something like that. Do you, and I think you, you just, it was, it was mentioned that that, that happened and you were engaging with the historical society. What, what's the impact of that? I mean, like if, if we found other, if remains were found there and there's remains under there. Would that preclude any development? I mean, I'm kind of worried that we might get, you know, development might, we might get something that we don't really know what, what we're getting and that, as far as that goes.
So it, there was no, I believe the report and the findings were at an adjacent site. Nothing immediately at this site, though, while there is potential. And in that case, consultation with the tribes would need to take place. There may even be some of that happening. It, it's typically built into the, the SEQA process. So I know that through the planning application right now, they're going through a process. We would have to go through any development on a city site. We play by all the same rules. So we have the same SEQA process. So it's also if it was a site we were developing, we'd have to go through the same process. Anybody developing the site would have to go through. And I believe that that's typically consultation with the tribe and then actions based on those findings.
That would happen after we only have the city owned the property and move forward with it?
If I can, no, it would not. We would have to do our due diligence. And I think the consultations are taking place. Our assistant planning director is here. This is associated with the SEQA work for the development application.
And the second question I have is, obviously this is, we don't have a recommendation of what kind of park it would be. What would that take? I mean, is there, is there how much time? Because the, with the size, I imagine it's a challenge, right? As you say, there's, there's lots of potential issues, uses. Do you have any, is if, if there isn't thing, hey, what, what is the, the audience recommendation from PTR? What, do you have an idea what the timing on that would be?
I do feel like they were very conflicted, would want to take their time to get the public input. To determine what the, the appropriate use for the site would be. So at the time that they made those recommendations, it went through the park subcommittee and up to the Parks, Trails and Recreation Commission. The, the intent at that time was to see it as a parkland opportunity based on its location and who it would serve. As far as a spark park space. They mentioned it, any sort of green space being beneficial to those adjacent apartments. The apartments that don't necessarily have a front yard. As you can imagine, if, for those who don't have a front yard, any sort of green space that close to your property. Could serve many of those park benefits. And I think that that was the commission's discussion was that. It could, it could serve as a good park space, but they would need that public input and that public process to determine what that final use would be. So there would need to be additional process that may, may take longer than the acquisition process could take as well.
Understood. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yep. Thanks for the report. You mentioned the appraisal costs and they're already in the budget. What part of the budget?
Under Fund 12, or sorry, Fund 17, the parkland.
Okay.
Fund has $20,000 allocated towards potential appraisals. So it's allocated, those funds are just there anyways. They won't go away. They're not general funds that.
Okay.
Be spent that way.
Okay, great. Thank you. And would it be fair to say that, well, we've got a seven to two recommendation from the PTR. Would it be fair to say that they want us to start this process? And then simultaneous or concurrently, they will be working on the recommendation? So those two processes will go along? I'm just a little bit concerned though, that you just said you thought the use recommendation might take longer. I don't, well. Is there some way we can have some assurance that they'll, you know, we'll get a recommendation on use before we have to make a, if we go forward? Before we make a decision on the acquisition?
So they did not indicate how, how long a process they were looking for? I will say that they were, they were conflicted. Regarding what the potential use could be. There, they were very undecided. There were several uses on the table. They started with the consideration of a small off-leash dog related space. They considered a, a more passive green space. Similar to what the town green use was listed as in the downtown specific plan. They, half court basketball came up as a potential option. They, there were several uses that were, that, that came up. The concern for the small space and use for off-leash dog was, was one of the primary discussion points. And whether or not it could really serve that type of use. There is a high demand for that. We're seeing it in the use on the school fields. We're seeing it as the use in some of our other park areas. There is still this very large need. It's listed in our Parks and Recreation Facilities master plan for these off-leash dog areas. But it's small size is very limiting for that type of use.
Well, would it be fair to say that each commissioner had a use in mind? But they didn't, couldn't all agree on one use? Or are there commissioners who just did not think it could be used for anything?
I would say there were commissioners that were undecided. I would say there were commissioners that were undecided and there may have been commissioners that had reservations about its potential use based on the size.
Okay, so we have a seven to two vote to recommendation that we move forward.
Any other questions? All right, I will turn this over, if that's the case, to public comment.
Mayor Dawson, I do not have any speaker slips for persons in the hall, but I do have Steve Reisman in our virtual audience. Or is it Shane? Sorry, Shane Reisman.
Yeah, hey, everybody. Thank you. Good evening. I was there in the room, but I had to leave. Very interested in the topic, dialing in as a public citizen. I think I've spoken to many of you about how strongly I feel about the value of park in a neighborhood and its overall value add to our individual health and physical health and community health and how much it just contributes overall to the community. And so right now, I think we also understand that depending on where you are in Lafayette, we are under indexed on park space. So this is an excellent opportunity to explore this space at low risk to us in Lafayette to see what we can create here. It's, as you can see in the report and the material, it's so close to downtown that it really creates a whole new dimension of walkable space that would really add to kind of the excitement and the vigor of that part of downtown. So I really encourage, and I thank you all for your consideration, but please help us, help Lafayette to continue to explore the opportunity to acquire this space and do something incredible with it. Those were all my comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
No additional speakers, mayor, at this time?
I have a question, Jonathan. When, when we talk about considering, what would that mean in terms of staff time?
I am the primary staff member for working, working with the appraisers and getting anything moving forward that way and negotiating. Will also be calling upon BBK for their services as well. Typically when we enter a negotiation process and the city manager is typically involved in the closed session, the negotiations. So that process will, it's a fairly simple process to move into and manage those contracts. There will be significant staff time and working with the Parks, Trails and Recreation Commission to review use. I think that that's probably the larger portion of this, with it being such a small space that doesn't already have a determined use in one of the city plans. The public engagement process surrounding that and working with the commissioners and trying to figure out what that use will be, there will be a higher demand on that side, I believe, than, than the other, the end of this process. But it could, and depending on what that use is and what that level of engagement is with the community, it could be pretty consuming for staff time.
Thank you. Are there any other discussion or comments or we talk about this recommendation in terms of considering this?
Well, I'll, I'll lead off by saying I'm in favor of moving forward since we have the commission coming to us with a seven to recommendation that we look into it. We clearly need additional park space in the downtown. This is not the ideal park site, but we do have commissioners who we've just heard think that this could be possibly a good site. I think it's worth exploring to see if they're, what the price might be. And then also encourage the commission to continue its discussion of what the, the best use might be. And then we can, if we move forward, you know, look at the use, look at the potential cost and then make a decision.
I concur, you know, walking this little teeny site amongst all those apartment buildings. I thought, I, I think it's really actually a great idea, an unused parking lot. So I would definitely want to move forward. I'm unclear about your second sentence in your recommendation. So if desired, as parkland council can declare as a minute order, can you explain what that is? Because we typically get these things and it'll come back to council in a closed session. And I just got confused about your wording here, if this, you're implying something different.
Let's see, so you, you just need to declare your intent in minute order. So it would go in the minutes that you have declared an intent to potentially acquire the property, which then opens up the ability to negotiate and we would schedule a closed session at a future meeting. So it just gets captured in the minutes.
That's correct. And Council, Candace, you're correct. This is just showing your interest in the property since it's never been discussed before in, before the council. So there's, we could not go to closed session without having the initial discussion to see if there was an interest in even going to closed session to discuss price in terms of payment.
Got it. Thank you.
Yeah, I guess, I actually, I do want to appreciate, I thank you for bringing this to our attention, allowing us to discuss this, I think, because it's, as you say, it's just really interesting. It's an opportunity. So yeah, I guess I'm, I'm certainly optimistic, cautiously optimistic, maybe we can find a good use for it. And so I, you know, I think I support this taking the next step. I think it's such a unique property, not taking the next step. We just, that seems, as you say, we have a property owner who's interested in negotiating with us. It feels like we at least need to take the next step in the process. That being said, I think we really, I think we want, if, if, if the, if the cost ends up being, as you say, what historically that the site might cost, the use, I think it has to be something really that the community can rally behind, but I'm certainly interested in taking the next step and seeing what the, what PTR can, can, can do. And I hope it doesn't take up too much staff time to kind of reach a conclusion. That's for sure.
Do you have a comment?
I actually have a concern about the pricing. You know, this is the one-time monies we have and although PTR said, yes, let's consider it, my, my thought is there's a lot of cons that you outlined that directly speak to our fiscal sustainability issue of us saying yes, when there's maybe a little more practical thought process as we think about planning for the future. It's not that we don't need parks, that's a given. We are short on parkland space. We are also short on the limited resources we have to put towards it. So I guess I'm, I'm wondering if we can't, you know, it was brought forward now, I'm wondering if we might want or consider putting this back to PTR to come back with more uses. I mean, it's still going to take staff time, but in a normal staff meeting is before it would go out for consideration. And I'm just thinking that, that in itself, the public engagement process is going to be, could be a very time and resource consuming process. So.
Let me follow up on that. In, in the staff report, you mentioned that the most recent prices for the property were 1.3, 1.4 million, but my understanding is that that was for this property plus additional property, not for this property alone. Is that correct? Well, no, but that was, that wasn't the real price.
Let's see, I don't have the exact details myself. I had heard that there were some adjacent properties that were potentially part of the, the prices that we see. I don't have the exact details or breakdowns of what that, that is. We really won't know what that cost is until we, we go through some sort of process, such as the appraisal.
And in the, the addendum from the three members of the commission, they have an estimate is what they think it will be. They acknowledge they are not real estate experts, but it's substantially lower amount. I, I think it's worth starting now, because if we find out immediately, no, it is 1.3 million, then I think we, I mean, my view would probably change on that. So I think it's, it's better to start now on that rather than to go through a whole PTR process and then try to start the, the real estate negotiation.
Excuse me, that would be an outstanding question that would be good to have answered before, more information before I at least would, would feel comfortable saying yes, let's, let's move forward. So I would ask.
So just to be clear then, so we, so I think that's fair, but then we're really saying we want the appraisal process to go through first before PTR spends a lot, we must spend a lot of staff time on it? I mean, I guess that's, again, the order of operations here, or do we want to, do we want a parallel track? What's, what's our recommendation to staff?
Yeah, I, I think we're going on a parallel track. But do we, as the city attorney, in terms of authorizing an appraisal, where does that come in? I know that's the first step, but do we do that in closed session or do we do that now or what?
I mean, if you're, you, you obviously could do it as part of a public discussion, but typically it's, it's something that comes from a closed session discussion.
Okay. But given where we are here, I mean, I, I would, based on this, recommend we, we authorize now the appraisal, so that we can find out what that number is right away and, and proceed on parallel tracks.
And maybe with a not exceed or something kind of budget for the appraisal, for the price of the appraisal. Can we do that? We can do that here?
I don't think we agendized it to do that, so, but I know that the city manager has certain purchasing powers that are within her power. So that may be something she can do separately, but I don't think we would take a vote on it.
And we would compare the appraisal costs with the previous appraisals that we've conducted to make sure it's in line.
Okay, so let me back up. Where is that leaving us then? We're considering the recommendation to consider, but at the same time, we are doing a parallel track to find the appraisal costs, so before it goes any further past consideration stage.
And I think what we're, I, I will move that we declare our intention to negotiate for the purchase of parcel APM 24314005 at 2021 Lafayette Circle and that we schedule a closed session to discuss price in terms of payment.
A second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I, I am in, a no on that, but it passes four to one. Thank you, Jonathan. I appreciate it. I think my concern is just really about going down that track and a little bit of not concise, you know, not a good pathway towards that, making a solid decision on that. So thank you. We will move on to the next item, which is the public hearing. Jean Eisenberg?
Mayor Dawson, Jean Eisenberg is joining us remotely and I have just promoted her to a panelist and she should be joining us momentarily.
Are you ready for me?
Yes, welcome, Jean.
Hi, thank you. Good evening, Mayor Dawson and members of the council. I'm Jean Eisenberg, the consulting planner for this item. So this is 101, 107 and 109, 009 Oak Hill Road. The project site is located downtown here on Oak Hill Road, just below the 24 and just north of Mount Diablo Boulevard. A little bit about the project history, the project was submitted under Senate Bill 330, which is a preliminary application, and that limits the public hearings to five. So there's been three hearings already on the project with the Planning Commission, Design Review Commission and the Transportation Commission. Most recently in April, this resulted in a recommendation from the Planning Commission for the council to approve the project. The main components of the project include demolition of two of the three commercial buildings on the site totaling approximately 4,300 square feet, the removal of 24 protected trees on and off site. Again, that one commercial building on the north end of the site would remain and as well as a portion of the surface parking lot. And then the project would merge three parcels into one. The project includes construction of 53 units, including six below market rate units. The project is a six-story building with three terrace landscape areas on the upper levels. There's a modest increase in impervious surface area, but an addition of stormwater treatment measures where none exists currently. And then 87 parking spaces primarily in the podium parking area, the new garage, as well as a small surface lot and 28 bike parking spaces. The site is zoned special retail business district, which allows the 100% multifamily dwelling unit building that you see proposed. The site is listed in the housing element and for these 51 units, including six below market rate units and 53 are proposed here. The project implies with the downtown objective standards as modified by waivers under state law as the product's proposed under state density bonus law. Just going to go a few, a few of the design slides, the plans and elevations. This is the site plan. On the right-hand side to the east, you see the project fronts Oak Hill Road, a pedestrian entrance bisecting the site from Oak Hill Road and then two driveway entrances, one to a surface parking lot on the north end and the second in a private easement on the south side of the lot, which enters into the podium parking garage. There are a few residential units fronting Oak Hill Road, but most of the units are in the upper levels. And then the existing commercial building to remain on the north end of the site. This is the south elevation, so as viewed from commercial units on just north of Mount Diablo Boulevard, partially viewable from Mount Diablo. You can see here that the building steps down towards Oak Hill Road. So although I called it a six-story building, it's really generally four stories within each component of the building and then measured from the back of the building to the front, that's how you get to the six stories. You can see the garage is located underground and then the building slopes down with the The main elevation is here, the east elevation viewed from Oak Hill Road. So here you see that six stories, but in reality, you'll see there are really four stories and then these fifth and sixth stories again pushed back from the street level. The reason this project is before the council and not the planning commission are because of the waivers requested under state density bonus law. Additionally, the applicant is eligible for one concession, although they have not requested any. So four waivers identified for the height of the building, for the design of the parking in terms of setbacks from structural elements, a waiver for the upper level massing above the first floor, and then a waiver for the setback, which does not include a landscape buffer fully around the site. A few notable conditions of approval and a couple modifications that I would suggest as the council decides to take action. So first, a condition of approval extending the permit approval from one to two years in light of, this was a request by the applicant and really in light of the current financial market conditions and the length of time that it takes to have a building permit moved through a building permit review. Condition of approval number 30, this is a regulatory agreement for the six affordable units. The staff recommendation is just to amend that condition to clarify that it's three very low and three low-income units. That's identified both in the staff report and the resolution, but making that more clear in the conditions of approval. The third one, condition of approval 31, the applicant has agreed to underground the utility pole in front of the building on the Oak Hill roadside at the northeast corner of the site, as well as underground the adjacent lines, the line across Oak Hill Road from west to east. And so just clarifying, we're recommending clarifying that in the condition of approval to amend that condition to identify the specific utility pole and the line across Oak Hill Road rather than along the project foundation. Condition of approval 33, to revise the arborist report and the tree mitigation calculations as recommended by the consulting arborist. And then the last notable condition, 38, the applicant has agreed to contribute towards a feasibility study to, to study the development of an off-site multi-use path between the park, parking lot and Oak Hill Road. And so that would help fund both a survey and feasibility analysis. Over the last couple of months, we've received three public comments, one from a housing organization acknowledging. One from a housing organization acknowledging that the project is compliant with the Housing Accountability Act. A second, comments from the adjacent neighbor expressing support and requesting coordination on a few different issues, which that neighbor has been working with the applicant on over the last couple of months, and you see some adjustments in the plans accordingly. And then third, a support letter for the project from a resident regarding the use, design, and location of the project. The staff's recommendation is to hold a public hearing, review the revised proposal, and adopt Resolution twenty twenty-four dash nineteen approving the project. That concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Jean. Are there questions for Jean? Would you like to start? Okay.
Hi, Jean. Yeah, a couple of questions. Thank you for the presentation, the staff report. It was, and the plans are quite, quite clear. A couple of questions on the parking, the eleven parking spaces on the podium, whatever. Look, is that, is that, is that solely for use of the housing? Or is it, is it shared with the business, the current Indigo and Poppy that's currently on site? Or what is the use of that, of that little parking island right there?
I'm gonna ask, so it's the eleven spaces are in the surface parking lot, and the eighty-seven, excuse me, the remainder of those spaces are in the podium parking.
That's right.
I'm gonna ask the applicant who's here, we have Brian Griggs and Jeff Stone, who may be on the attendees list, and then we have Jeff raising his hand who can help answer this question.
We will wait for the applicant's presentation to answer that question.
Okay.
Okay, so we have a follow-on.
Yes.
Then, okay, I have some other questions that might be more applicable for the applicant than not, not planning. Let me just quickly, just take. Well, one question I actually did have, so we are suffering through an extended period of construction through on Mount Diablo Boulevard, of course, or across the street from Desco Plaza. That's caused numerous traffic delays and inconvenience lots of, lots of citizens. This is even more in the heart of, this project is more in the heart of Lafayette, could be affecting lots of people, you know, by coming into downtown from the frua and so on. I see there's a, there is a proposed construction schedule or whatever in the plans. It's in March twenty twenty-four, which you've already passed through, I believe, July twenty twenty-five, which seems aggressive, given what we've heard. So I just, I'm wondering, what do we think the impact is on traffic? Is there anything we can do to make sure this doesn't drag on for years and years and years, and we're stuck with Oak Hill being cut down to one lane? Or I just can't even imagine that the concerns we've seen on Mount Diablo being applied to Oak Hill right here. So I'm just kind of curious on the speed at which they think that construction's gonna happen and what we can do to help manage this, that, the, all the traffic on Oak Hill.
So in terms of the construction schedule, part of what you may be looking at is the, part of the environmental analysis. This project started a couple of years ago. The applicant requested that it be put on pause towards the end of twenty twenty-two. So that's why when you see that the construction was intended to start March twenty twenty-four, that didn't happen.
That's from two years ago? That, that, okay, I understand that now.
So their timeline has been pushed out in terms of the potential construction start date. They will be required to do a traffic management plan as part of the building permit. And so that would identify any needed lane closures or what would happen during construction in terms of staging areas, in terms of any sidewalks or lanes that would need to be closed. And so part of that would be approved as part of the building permit process.
Okay, doesn't really mitigate my concerns, but I understand that's the answer we have right now.
We could pick that up with the presentation. Thank you. One of the things that we've been hearing from our fire department is access to be able to fight a fire in this building. I didn't really see it in this report, maybe I just missed it. But was fire, I know, I know it's part of the whole approval process as well, but by any chance, have you spoken with fire about this particular project?
So the project was originally reviewed and referred to all of the city's departments and the county fire and, and building. And so I do not see any specific comments about concerns about fighting the fire. There was also a sequel analysis that was done. So no, no concerns expressed here. But again, as you mentioned, the project will be reviewed for the building permit by the fire department and all of the required fire codes and fire inspections involved during construction.
Great, thank you. One last. So in the conditions of approval number thirty-eight that you just brought up, that is a little change, is the one-time contribution to the path. So that's along the Aqueduct Trail. That's what I'm understanding?
Yes, and so no, no change proposed there. It's just we're identifying some notable conditions of approval. This is not a requirement for the project. This is something that, as you know, the, the city has been working on linking together components of this Aqueduct Trail, off-site trail. And so this is a voluntary contribution by the property owner, excuse me, by the applicant towards a feasibility study. This particular section has some grade challenges, and so it's not as simple as installing the trail. There will likely need to be some ramping to make sure that it's ADA accessible. So there's, this next step is really just about identifying options and doing a survey.
Great, thank you. Thank you. Any questions on this side? Okay, then I think we can call up the, for the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Dawson and fellow council members. My name's Brian Griggs. I've met many of you before with nine fifty Huff, which we're proud to say is now well under construction, if you haven't seen. And Jeff Stone and I are partners in Oak Hill. Jeff asked me to become a partner about nine months ago to try and move through entitlements and then work through, eventually work in drawings, financing, and then the construction aspect. Jeff would be here tonight. He is home ill. He is on video, and I think he would probably be the most appropriate to answer some of the specific questions. I know I could fumble my way through a few of the questions on fire and such. A lot of work has gone into this. Jeff's worked a long, long time to try and get a very, quote unquote, six-story building, not to appear as a six-story building. And I think they've delivered, especially given the challenges of the site and some of the grades, you know, a workable solution, you know, for one of the key entries into our town. But, and then the contribution as to the East Bay Mud, you know, it was not a requirement, as was said by Jeanie, but, you know, that's a critical link for our residents to try and get to BART, and I think to try and use some of the full purpose of that trail, you know, parallel to the freeway. And so by making a contribution, we think it's, the work that's been done today was a little stale. I think some of the pricing estimates are a little stale, and I think there's alternatives that really could be explored, and so we just want to be a part of that, try and make sure it comes to reality. But I don't have a large presentation because I think the package was really well done. I think the drawings themselves were well done. We got some good feedback, I know, from the Planning Commission and prior to my involvement from Design Review and some of the other organizations. Got a lot of good direction from staff on some of the issues that they felt were important, like undergrounding the lines, et cetera, you know, worked collaboratively with Mr. Moore, who's the neighbor who shares an easement with his property. But, you know, I'd like to suggest, if possible, I'll step down, admit Jeff. If there's specific questions, he'd probably be the best one to answer those. So thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, would you like me to bring Mr. Stone in at this?
Yes, please.
Jeff?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Again, apologize for not being there. I always try to be a pub carrying. So thank you for taking the time. I do apologize on by Zoom. To answer the first question about a traffic maintenance plan, it's one of the first things that we do study is just a sequencing and then a staging plan. We have the staging plan for the front of the building so that we don't affect all of, all of Oak Hill while we're under construction. Construction schedule is definitely not starting this year for a variety of reasons. And frankly, we pulled the project hoping that we would be in front of you with a project that relates to the six element housing update. But today, since we have this available to us to close on the land, we're forced to finalize this entitlement. For fire, AMMs were talked and discussed with Chris Bachman of Concha Costa Fire Protection District. The reason that it's difficult in the city of Lafayette is the lack of the, of the ladder truck. So fortunately, with Chris Bachman, we worked out a few alternative means and methods, additional standpipes, additional stairways to roof, additional access, additional ladders, additional fireproofing methods of, of construction materials oh, quite a bit a while ago. Environmental analysis and everything that went into that takes this project into consideration. The only thing that would have changed under those thirty-two exemption documents is the construction schedule. As far as the rest of the project, it's you, I was listening in, and you're getting the feedback about costs in general with just roadways and what asphalt contractors are doing in general. Well, it's in general, I'm under construction, finishing Lucas Ranch, thirty-seven forty-two Mount Diablo, and nine fifty Huff in Lafayette. I'm very proud of those projects to be under construction, but the costs in general are pretty prohibitive. And then you put the capital costs on top of that, which is more than doubled since the time we started this project, and it makes it even more difficult to see these projects through. We are committed to this location in the city of Lafayette. We are committed to the community of Lafayette, and we're committed to being a solution-oriented developer that looks at the whole part of the housing issues that we see as estate to provide both, hopefully rental, as well as for sale, housing to our city. I always contemplated this site as a rental project because frankly, I've looked, and there hasn't been a rental site built for about fifteen years in Lafayette. So it's something that is needed. Brian Griggs, Nikhil Garrett, Andrew Jacobson, Stephen Cave, and partners of mine to see it through. We're committed to closing on the site, and we're committed to continuing to figure out the best way forward for the actual development so that it satisfies, and it actually helps the gateway into this city. I'm happy to answer any other questions, and thank you again for your time.
Thank you, Councilor Rendery.
Yeah, Jeff, thank you for that. I, I want to make sure I understand something you just said. You, you need, you want this approval, need this approval in order to close on the property. But I understand from what you said, you have a preferred project.
I've designed and submitted to Lafayette a larger project that takes all four parcels. It was and cannot be processed yet because the sixth cycle has not been approved in H C D. The, the option that I have on the property requires me to finalize something so that there's some value on the property, because unfortunately, again, commercial real estate isn't what it was worth three years ago.
Okay, thank you. And just quickly, I think I read in the Planning Commission minutes that you have, well, actually more than required E V charging, more than our ordinance required. Is that right? There's E V charging for each unit?
I don't remember exactly what he specified on these plans, so I don't want to misrepresent, but from a, from a market standpoint, we're providing E V charging as much as possible because not only is it the right thing to do, but fortunately, the market is demanding E V charging stations at, at parking or at stalls these days.
Okay, and is the project still all-electric?
As of today, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, Jeff, thanks. So just to follow up on the question I had asked earlier, I'm just kind of curious, the, those elevens parking spaces that are separate from the on-ground parking, is that, could be shared with the business next to it? Is that gonna be dedicated to the, the building?
Sorry, I should have answered that question specifically. The retail use will be those spots off to the right with that curb cut, and then the residential and commercial use will be shared evenings and days.
Okay, great. Another, I'm just kind of curious. So this is, this is rental. How, this would be rent, rental?
Correct.
Correct. Did you ever, I'm just kind of curious, just thinking of, from your perspective as a developer here, you know, we've, we've talked also with some of the housing going in that we're interested in potentially getting commercial on the ground floor and residential above. Did you ever consider that for this property, or was this residential? I'm kind of curious, your, your thoughts as a developer, how you would approach?
Yeah, I, I could, I don't want to, I, I know you guys have already had a long night, so I'll try to be brief in the explanation, but commercial is not underwriting for us developers at all, especially with the availability in multiple local markets, La Mirinda, and then go to Oakland, San Francisco. Retail is, is a little bit nerve-wracking on that particular site. Is if you're trying to underwrite something like a restaurant, are people gonna be pulled all the way to that site? Or is it, is it not as walkable as other areas like nine fifty Huff to the, to the center? There's better sites for restaurants, et cetera, from an opinion-based side. So as a core and shell with the size of the building at fifty-three units, and then needing to get that podium because it steps up into the hillside by trying to reduce the, the height of the building from Oak Hill, it made it technically, not only economically, but physically impossible with what we're proposing. Now, with that said, in the other, other architectural and topographical studies that we've done with the other architects, as well as, as our own side, if we looked at a for-sale project and you increase the density, what's being considered in the sixty or seventy-five units per acre, then we would want to activate it with some ground floor retail so that it's seen as an amenity for not only the community, but also the building.
All right. Thank you. I appreciate your, your thoughts on that.
Thank you. First, to follow up on Carl's question about your preferred project, could you explain that a little bit more? So basically, the sixth cycle is, is that because we're, you're assuming we're gonna upzone this property? And so you have another project ready to be submitted if, if and when we upzone this project, the property?
Yes.
Okay, and that, you sounded like you needed another parcel, or is it just these same parcels?
It's the same parcels.
Okay, so same parcels, and you've got a, a different project in mind as well? Okay, but you need to do this now? Why? I mean, you need to get this approval now? Why?
To finish the entitlement that we started, so that there's value from a development standpoint, that there's an entitlement and a commercial building. So the way that the underwriting world works is it's either the value as purchased is either a parking lot with a commercial building with a commercial building up above it, or I can look at it from a value standpoint of that there's an entitled fifty-three unit project plus a commercial building.
Okay, got it.
It's, it's an issue of finance, and that's, that's, it's, and, and it's, it's why we've been patient in trying to understand how this was going to finalize itself out. But we can't guarantee that the upzoning occurs, as, as you know, and we can't guarantee that process. So we have a option on the property that we would like to close on, so we need this entitlement.
Okay, got it. Okay, thank you. And the other pieces are more, I guess, design questions? And I, I know we can't, we've got our objective design standards. I totally understand that. I don't know, we can't ask for anything. But are like the colors in your displays, are those really the colors this is gonna be?
I think, without going again into too far detail, the problem with entitlements process of a project is we haven't got into the CDs. We haven't got into design development. We haven't got into, to the actual design development, and then we haven't got into the construction documents. So the, the entitlement documents are always something to start processing, more siding, massing. I think you're aware of my work and the pride that I take into architectural projects. If this project is built, every color, every brick, every part of the project will be further analyzed during the C D process.
Okay.
And if, if anything changes, we would obviously go back to staff and/or design review and/or any commissions that necessitate approval.
Okay, so, so my suggestions of somehow softening this up from looking so industrial is something that maybe you'll be willing to address?
I, I will be looking at every detail of this project before it is built, and. And yes, I think there is room for improvement.
Right. So I work in Dublin and so I'm surrounded by stumpies, all different shapes and sizes. And there are some that are far more attractive than others. And it's not hard to see the, you know, the addition of fun railings or shapes. So everything's not a rectangle, right? So you've got different shapes and different design patterns and different directions. So I'm just, I guess, encouraging you to consider that for this project.
I appreciate the comments.
Thank you. Sorry.
Jeff, I have a question for you, following up on Councilmember McHendell's earlier question about the fire department. So you, it sounds like you've worked with Chief Bachman. And normally, it's true, we do usually see these letters in terms of what we're finding. The ladder truck was an issue for us and as we move into obviously development, this may be the first of many that are of higher levels potentially. But you worked out alternatives, like how did that come up? Like how can we have that kind of information sooner than later?
It's on the development applicant. I'm going to read you an email that was to Samina from Chris Bachman so that you can hear it from his words. "Samina, they are working with us to submit an alternative means and methods since they do not meet the aerial access requirements. The items listed below would be acceptable since we still have aerial access, but not the requirement of one full side to the highest point of the roof. The ground ladder access requirement could be eliminated if the portions of the building that do not meet compliance are constructed of type three A construction. Firewall separation will be required to separate type five and type three construction if both are utilized. It appears the other items will be addressed when the building permit is submitted with the updated construction plans." So in different types of construction, whether it be type one, three, five, single family, et cetera, oftentimes you can never meet a full fire code because of topography. Or I can list a hundred things. And fire consultants are brought on early with us developers to determine what alternative means and methods could be supplied to that fire department so that they feel not only the safety of their firefighters as well as the safety of the occupants of the buildings can be met. So the type five to type three would be two hour firewalls, the additional standpipes, the additional ladder access, et cetera, which gives the fire department confidence that the time it would take for that fire to move in and through the building, they would have the means to actually fight it. It's going to be, that's a long way of saying it's site by site too. Nine fifty Huff, we had to make that entire building type three for the two hour fire based off of the lack of fire access because the fire truck wouldn't actually have enough width on that roadway to get that truck into the position to get to the four story of that building. And I can give you examples in San Ramon that I'm dealing with differently, et cetera, et cetera. So typically, as developers, as we're analyzing a project and a site, fire safety and life safety is one of the first things we look at from a due diligence side of going, how if we can't and we need to go to heights or different types of construction, how are we going to comply? And that's typically and always done through an AMM process. To finalize that thought, before I would be able to get a building permit, there would be the condition of approval that would require me to go to Contra Costa Fire Protection District that would verify all of those, all of those AMMs.
Okay, that would be one of the conditions. Okay, thank you. And I do want to note, I listened in to a recording of the, well, a couple of meetings that you've been to, the Trans circ as well as planning commission. And I do appreciate the accommodations for those recommendations that came out of both those commissions. This is, as Councilmember McCormick mentioned, this is one of our showcase street. We come into Lafayette through Oak Hill. So your comments of saying, yes, you want to make this kind of an exemplary type of building for what this can be for multifamily that meets the needs of our community in terms of it's downtown, it's near transportation. I do appreciate that point of view on that. So thank you for that. Other than that, I'm trying to think, any more questions?
A quick one. Jeff, I think at the planning commission, you expressed an interest, a desire to cooperate early with the public art committee on the development of an artwork. And if that's the case, are you okay with revising the condition of approval? Right now, it says the property owner shall submit an application for public art, which includes the following. Can we change that to the property owner shall collaborate with the public art committee in the development of a proposed artwork and then submit an application for public art?
Absolutely.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. I think we will bring this back to council.
Open the public hearing, Mayor.
Oh, yes, is there public comment?
You've opened the public hearing on item thirteen A. I have one speaker's slip for persons in the community hall and one virtual hand raised. So our first speaker is Chris Palomo.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. My name is Chris Palomo and I'm a field rep of the NorCal Carpenters Union out of Local One Fifty-Two in Martinez, California, representing all of Contra Costa County. I'd like to first say thank you guys for allowing me to speak tonight. I'm here to discuss with you guys the importance of making sure that there are labor standards enforced on this development. The blue collar men and women who will build this project deserve more than the bare minimum standards. They deserve a commitment to area standard wages, healthcare benefits, and the use of the state certified apprenticeship program. Paying workers area center wages is crucial for maintaining a stable, skilled, and motivated workforce in the construction industry. This not only supports the livelihood of the workers and their families, but also contributes to a higher work quality and safety standards on the job sites. By ensuring the workers are being paid these area center wages, you are giving workers a fighting chance at the middle class at a time where high interest rates and everything costs an arm and a leg. Second, making sure that every worker has access to healthcare is essential. Healthcare shouldn't be a luxury for the fortunate few. The physical well-being of our workers directly impacts their productivity, morale, and overall quality of life. By implementing healthcare benefits on this project, you are not only prioritizing the welfare of our workforce, but are also strengthening the entire community's health and resilience. Lastly, the use of a state certified apprenticeship program is vital to investment for the future of our workforce. Apprenticeship programs provide invaluable hands-on experience and knowledge, creating a pipeline of skilled and qualified workers who are not only ready to meet the demands of today, but are also equipped to address the challenges of tomorrow. By enforcing these labor standards, you as leaders of Lafayette are not only ensuring the success of this future development, but you're also signaling Lafayette's commitment to sustainable growth, quality job creation, social responsibility, and setting a precedent that will benefit this community for generations to come. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment and for waiting through the evening to make that. Any questions? Okay.
Our last speaker is Cheryl McDonald.
Hello?
Hi Cheryl.
Hi, I'll be quick because I know it's getting late. I just wanted to follow up on Councilmember McCormick's question that was earlier regarding how the project would be managed and whether there'd be lane closures on Oak Hill. I think one of the developers mentioned the front of the building. I just wanted to clarify, does that mean that Oak Hill would not have lane closure? So the off ramp, there would be a free flowing lane for the project? Or would there be temporary closures for that lane? If you could expand on that, that is a concern of mine as well. So if you could expand on that, that'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any more public comment?
There's no more public comment.
Okay. Actually, is Jeff still available to answer that question? Oh, thank you, Jeff.
Yep, sorry. First to Chris Palomo, thank you for taking the time to sit and give your comments. We're a second generation construction company that started in nineteen eighty-five for my father that he was on his own at about fifteen years old. And the blue collar part of our business and the family and how we treat labor is of the utmost, most important side of everything that I do. And we became a vertically integrated development company by having respect for the families that live off of the projects. And I feel nothing but respect for every person that comes on a site and affords their family the opportunity to hopefully live better based off of the construction site itself. So thank you, Chris, and I'm happy to have a conversation with you outside about our projects, et cetera. Second, as far as the lane closure, there is, and unfortunately, one of the hard parts of construction is that it is disruptive. We try to be as disruptive as little and at the right times as possible. If there is and if there ever was any lane closures based off of mass excavation and/or severe or significant concrete pores, there would be adequate traffic control. There would be an adequate plan, there would be adequate notice, and we would make sure that there would be adequate flaggers like any other sort of road construction that you're used to. So I can't tell you what that looks like as of today because we haven't gotten into our, into our construction documents. But I assure you, anything that we would do, knowing that that is one of the veins into our city, we would be highly sensitive to the impact it would have on the rest of the community.
Thank you for that. And in follow up to that, because the dates are, I'll change because of the pause. What if all goes according to, you know, approval and what you need to do, what is your estimate of when construction might start?
I'm going to answer the question honestly. And you get that from me. I think you know that from the side of our relationship. The, I'm hopeful that we can start processing the other project with staff and that the six housing element update is certified by HCD, the upzoning occurs. And I think you'll see a much larger, excuse me, not much larger, a much better project for the overall site. So as of today, I couldn't tell you exactly when it could start for a variety of reasons. First being finance, yield on cost underwriting is not where it was. Why you see so few starts in the Bay Area in total. Second, it is, it's a little bit, without getting too far into the details of the difficulty in the construction market, it is a project that would be difficult to underwrite in total as a developer today. So how I answer that is macroeconomics, we will never be bigger than and we will continue to watch the macro side. But hopefully, you will be seeing us soon again with a project that I hope you feel even better about.
So as I understand it, then this is a proxy, so in a way for another project that will come down the pike. But in the meantime.
To.
Okay.
To be open and honest, you said this is a vein. I went to Lafayette School, I went to Stanley, and then I went to Alcalanes. I didn't want to be the developer putting a builder's remedy in as a way of trying to get my way and putting a project into the city that I wouldn't feel good about driving next to as I show my kids the projects that I work on. So I didn't, I had two alternatives. And I see Mr. Endury smirking to it. The reality is, is that the weaponization of the builder's remedy is something that I'm not interested in inside of being a developer and inside of my own community. But the reality of the economics are very real to us of whether or not there's value to land or if there's not value to land. So we had to go through this process to secure some sort of entitlement, depending on where the market is and depending on where our sixth cycle goes.
Please, yes.
Yeah, I think you were misinterpreting. I was not smirking. I was smiling at the thought of the alternative project.
Sixteen stories and it would be, it would be at twenty percent AM, it would be twenty percent BMR. And it would be the only, it would be like coming through Oakland and seeing the building on the right as you go through. And that's not what I see as being the heart of what we're coming into Lafayette. So we felt like as community members and as community developers, this was a preferred alternative than either putting a builder's remedy either as leverage and/or putting builder's remedy in as a means of getting a project that would underwrite that we wouldn't ultimately feel proud of.
Okay, are there comments, any other comments on that?
Mayor, you have to close the public hearing.
The public hearing is closed and then we'll bring it back to council. Thank you. Oh, at this point, are there any other comments to follow up? All right. Then we will come back to staff recommendations. Let me find that. Okay, stack is recommending, we hold a public hearing, which we did. We view the revised proposal and adopt resolution twenty twenty-four dash nineteen. But I think that there were, there are changes that, along with the changes that were suggested by staff. Right, do we want to reiterate those or clarify those?
I think she did, right?
She adds upon the, Jean has.
Yes, she had those ones.
Conditions, right, with the updated conditions of approvals. So that is a recommendation and if we have those, if we have anything else to add, now's the time.
Well, we're going to go through this page by page.
Yes.
Okay.
We'll go through the conditions. Sorry, scrolling all the way down here. Okay. So actually, Jean, you want to guide us? You want to take us through? You want us to go through just those conditions or if people have particular conditions? Are you just going to go through each one starting?
I'll just say, I don't have any changes to the resolution other than I raised a point with Greg about, I think the resolution needs to explicitly approve the grading and tree permits. It talks about the requirements and how they're met, but it doesn't explicitly say the council approves them. And I guess while we're, they're looking at that, you know, generally, I'm in favor of going forward with this and approving it. I just do want to say though, that as Councilmember McHendell pointed out, I think this is an industrial looking building too as it stands. And I was pleased to hear Jeff say that he would be open to a further development of it. But I have to say, I hope the other, he is able to move on to the other project, which, and we don't end up with this project.
Yes, Greg, do you have a thought on Councilman Rendery's edit to the resolution?
Happy to, so on page twenty-two of the posted packet, that is the resolution, I'm sorry, yeah, the resolution, two thousand twenty-four dash nineteen, item four, we believe, covers it adequately. I discussed with the city attorney, we're happy to make any amendments that you would like to make. But based on the above findings, that the city council approves the request for approval of the designer view application, the grading permit application number, the tree permit application number to demolish two existing commercial buildings with some square footages in there, construct a new six-story multifamily development.
Okay, thanks. Okay, thank you.
And build that. So if you would like to add any additional language, we're happy to do that.
But no, that's fine. Thank you.
You're welcome. You're welcome.
Then are there any other questions about the resolutions to, okay. Uh, any, oh, back to the conditions. Any other, uh, recommended edits to point out on the conditions besides the ones that, uh, Jean has pointed out particularly?
Well, and the one about the public art committee that I mentioned.
Yes. And that is number?
That was number 14. And it's just after shall inserting collaborate with the public art committee in the development of a proposed artwork and then.
Jean, did you capture that?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you for that catch, Carl. Uh, I do not have other questions as to the conditions or edits, but I will. Then in that case, Councilmember Andori, besides those, I think we can move forward if there are no other edits to the recommendation. Please.
Okay, so I'll, I'll move. We adopt resolution 2024-19 with attachment A as amended to approve the project.
Is there a second? A second? All right, all in favor of the motion? But I?
I.
And I'm an I. And it is unanimous. Thank you. Thank you, Brian and Jeff for being here.
Thank you very much. Hope that wasn't too awkward of a, of a different public hearing for us, but I do appreciate that I can be transparent with you as a council and in the community. I prefer it that way than the other way.
A, as do we. So thank you for that. We appreciate your, your work and your intentions. Thank you.
Good evening.
All right, we have, uh, covered the items removed from a consent earlier. Uh, so now we move on to council and commission reports. Any reports, please?
Um, so I, I do want to report on the La Marinda School Bus Transportation Agency. We had a meeting right after our council meeting last time, so it seems like a while ago, but it, it was right after our council meeting. And, um, and there was some really good news, um, that we got from our, uh, Whitney Simon, who has pulled a just absolute, you know, amazing amount of work. And there were, uh, two major things that she was able to get through. And one was, um, an MOU with CCTA to be the agency for us to get that funding that the state is, said that we were supposed to get, but that was only for Lafayette. So Lafayette is going to get the, the funding started this year and Arinda and Maraga will do it next year. And so we're kind of, you know, blazing the trail through that with, with the, um, commitment from our school districts and a lot of help from a lot of people, um, to make that happen. So that was, that was really great news, number one. And then, um, and the MOU did get, um, passed and signed, it was due on May 1st and it got signed. And then, uh, the second piece was we were trying to get the RFP, um, in collaboration with traffics, because traffics is a San Ramon, um, transportation agency. And, uh, we were hoping that they were going to be able to delay theirs, but we can't, we weren't able to make that happen. So instead, we're moving our RFP process up by like, you know, eight or nine months. And so by the end of the summer, we're going to have to be doing this RFP, but with traffics, it will give whatever, um, school bus transportation agency more time to ramp up to support us as well. That's how we're viewing this and that is the strength of having us negotiate together is that, you know, we, you don't have to do them both right at the same time. You're also going to have some time to build up your infrastructure here because there is another transportation agency across the bay that has been coming in much cheaper and more local and more willing to work with districts. And so we're hoping to entice them as another bidder. And so we're hoping that that is going to be great. So I just wanted to report those two pieces of good news.
That is exciting.
Yeah.
Thanks to Whitney. And all the partners in that. Any other updates?
Well, first of all, it's May, Asian Pacific American Highlander, uh, and Asian American Pacific Islander Native Hawaiian Heritage Month. And I had the pleasure of, uh, attending, uh, an Asian, uh, Public Affairs evening in Dublin, uh, that had the full Dublin City Council, like my, um, four of the five council members and many other city officials from the, the Bay Area in attendance. It was a talent show, actually. Uh, it wasn't a dinner, it was, it was a performance for two hours of children in high school. It was a wonderful community event in its sixth year. And, um, uh, that was, that was just a really great way just to see how East Bay, Tri-Cities down there was, uh, celebrating. Uh, tomorrow I will be, uh, representing to the Contra Costa County in Martinez. The staff, uh, is holding an Asian Pacific American, uh, heritage. Also, I think another, uh, performance and celebration in Martinez. So, um, happy to be a part of this month's celebrations.
Thank you. That is also good news.
I think it's probably noteworthy to, uh, realize a couple of days ago on Saturday, we had our first artisan walk, which is a new chamber, uh, you know, the city and, uh, chamber we put together where we had artists in strategically placed in multiple, uh, downtown businesses. Uh, lots of people kind of coming and walking downtown shopping, many of which commented that they had never been to those stores or been on that side of the street or whatever. So another way to kind of draw people downtown on a beautiful, if warm, uh, Saturday afternoon. So I think it was quite successful.
Thank you. Um, and to follow up to that, I had the pleasure of, um, speaking to the Friends of Lafayette Library and, uh, foundation, uh, Learning Center Foundation. And, uh, I just want to give a shout out to all those volunteers there that do so much work and bring, um, more cultural enrichment to our city and have been diligently doing that, um, and, and really bringing the library to bear in the first place, but, but keeping it lively and keeping more, um, events and, uh, authors and wonderful things happening there. So do appreciate their work. Are there any other reports? Okay. Uh, any public comments?
No public comment.
All right, thank you. Then in that case, we will move on to adjournment. Oh, we aren't, where are we?
It was a 15B.
Oh.
Well, you know what?
Fast one.
I'm missing that.
Oh, it got added. Okay. So I have the older agenda printed out. Let's go back to the.
Sorry about that.
No, I'm glad, I'm glad you're, okay. This is the, when I printed out, so let me go back to the live version here. Pardon me. Yeah, oh, thanks. Oh, yes. Uh, this is Councilmember Candy Long Quoc to appoint two members to the Transportation and Circulation Commission. So we had, um, interviews, um, Councilmember Quoc and I had interviews, um, can't remember exactly which day it was. Um, and, um, we had one interview for, um, Stella Witherspoon to continue on her service, um, on Trans circ. And that was, that was approved to continue on her, uh, her journey of supporting the Trans circulation, uh, commission with a high level of, uh, involvement and a high level of enthusiasm on that commission. We enthusiastically endorsed her. And then, um, we had one more opening and, uh, we had two applicants. And after talking with, um, the member of the Trans circ that did come to thing and our staff member, we recommended, um, the appointment of Michelle Sahar as the second, uh, Trans circ committee, uh, commission member. Thank you. So, so we, we have to take a vote on that, right?
Yes.
Or have people?
Is there?
Yeah. Is there a public comment or actually any questions from council first? All right. Are there any public comments on this item?
Mayor Dawson, there are no public comments on this item at this time.
Thank you. Then I will bring that, this back and, um, would someone like?
I'll move to adopt resolution 2024-21, appointing two members to the Transportation and Circulation Commission. That would be reappointment of Stella Witherspoon for one position and Michelle Sahar for the other.
All right, second, all in favor? Just.
Point of clarification, Stella's term will start July 1 and run for two years and the newest member will go on the shorter term, correct?
Uh, yes, actually that is correct.
Okay, thank you.
I forgot that level of detail. Thank you. Great, thank you for that. Okay, all in favor of the motion with that point of correction? I?
I.
I. So it is unanimous. We have two new, well, returning member, I guess consistently, and a, a new member. So thank you and thank you for all the applicants that came out with that interest. Very much appreciate it. Okay, with that, we should move on to, uh, no written communications, so adjournment. Thank you very much, everybody.